All right. Thanks, everybody, for coming. We'll get started here so we can get you guys back to business this morning. And I'll call on Commissioner Shove to do the invocation.
Bow your heads, please. Dear Lord, thank you for the day. Thank you for this gorgeous weather that we're experiencing right now. Thank you for us being able to come together and meet in this land of ours that is free. Help us and guide us to do business that would be in the best interest of our community today, in thy name, amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Shove. We normally have a vet here to do this, and so we're going to have our Veterans Service Officer to lead us in the pledge. Megan Tomlin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The purpose of this Thursday meeting is for us to hear from you and for us to discuss items. We don't plan to take, to do any business here at these meetings. I'm not saying we won't have to every once in a while if we have an emergency situation, but we're just here to talk about issues that we're confronted with. And then even some items you'll see on the agenda that are pending action items, but those action items will be at our September meeting, not here today, okay? So do we have a motion to adopt the agenda? Or Brian, did you need to say something? Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Ms. Finney? And Mr. Renninger, seconds. All in favor? We're going to assume Brian is okay with that. All right. Robin?
Good morning. Today, I'll talk to you about our financial report for July. Since we are only one month in as far as this report goes, is, you know, we're trying to be careful not to show any trends or make any assumptions just based on one month of data. So this report compares July year-to-date, which is just the month of July, to the prior year's July. I'll talk about expenditures first. The major difference between this July and last July is that we made the capital projects contribution in July of last year. That's why that expenditure is so much higher. The major difference in revenues is the property tax. As you can see, I think we sent out bills about a week earlier than we did this time last year. I have a chart to show you for general fund revenues. The blue bars represent fiscal year '25. So as you can see, property tax looks pretty high. But again, as the year goes along, it'll probably even out just due to timing. Sales tax, anything that we collect prior to September is related to last fiscal year. That's why everything is zero. Intergovernmental, you can see that the green line represents fiscal year 2023. Again, that's just timing of interlocal, intergovernmental revenues that we receive. And, you know, everything else is pretty much the same. So just let me know if you have any questions about this. I think we've also included the public utilities page in your agenda packet. But we'll get, you know, as we get more data, we'll have more information to share. It's just hard to talk very much about just one month out of 12, so.
Any questions for Robin? Thank you so much. Brian, I'm going to assume maybe you, if you want to, in general, go over these pending items.
Yes, I think, Mr. Chairman, I thought it would be good for us always to have an opportunity to know what was coming up on the next regular meeting, which will be September 3rd, if I got the date right, but the Tuesday after Labor Day. I know this has always, this has been somewhat of a topic of discussion here recently with appointments, so we wanted the public to be aware that at the September meeting, if there's anybody that has an interest, that we will be looking to bring to you to decide on reappointments to the Board of Adjustments, reappointment to the Planning Board, reappointment to the JCP, which is our Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. We have several reappointments coming up for review, reappointment to the Water Improvement Commission. We have a change as an appointment to the Child Protection and Child Fatality Prevention Team, and then an appointment or replacement, again, on the JCP Board as well. So we will be bringing those for you to take a look at. Also, September, we do have several, I guess you could call them celebrations. It will be National IT Professional Day, National Preparedness Month, National Senior Service, Senior Center Month, National Voter Registration Day, September 17th, and also not listed on here, but September is also Suicide Prevention Month. As we put the agendas together, we also are notified from staff of additional topics. So they're not listed on your agenda, but you will see these next week when we do, when we do publish the agenda for the September meeting. We plan to bring to you a public hearing for a zoning map amendment at 460 Boxwood Church Road. This is a rezoning from four acres that is looking to go from R20 to RA. This particular public hearing will go to the Planning Board next week. Assuming they take action, then we'll bring it to you all. If not, then we'll wait and do it in October. We are looking to bring to you a sewer capacity request from the Hendricks Village Project. This is the project there off of Farmington Road, right below North Davie High School that a couple of, maybe it's been a full year. We did a rezoning request out there for a project. We are bringing you the sewer capacity request because we just recently approved the Dutchman Creek Pump Station Project, and that project had a large part in this particular project, too. And also, the state has made some changes to how we calculate sewer capacity when it comes to residential units. So that's what delayed the timing of this sewer capacity request in relationship to the project being approved last year. And some good news, Davie County, from the, from the state, sold in water, one of our farms, D&amp;M Farms on Callahan LLC, was named the 2024 Farm of the Year. So we will bring forth those folks for that celebration. We, at our last meeting, we talked about our Fire Relief Fund Committee. Hope to be able to move forward with that. We're going to take our first real step towards revaluation in September with the introduction of the Schedule of Values from our Tax Office. And then we also plan to bring to you our installment vehicle financing for the vehicles for this fiscal year. So I know that was kind of a mouthful, but if there's any particular questions about any of those that are coming forward, we'll be glad to answer.
Any questions or anything you need to have added?
That, too.
We're good? So we'll move right into? I will say this, you mentioned D&amp;M. Just a prayer request, pray for the Dyson family out there. Tremend, you know, an accident that one of their family members was in, and tough situation. Our EMS, our Emergency Service folks just did a great job, but just pray for them. Many of you will know what that's about, but just remember them. All right, let's move on.
Mr. Chairman, as part of our discussion items, I thought it would be important to introduce to you all various topics and programs that we have either we're looking to implement or we may want to get additional feedback from you before we move forward. In some cases, we would like to get feedback on what you're thinking, and even if what you're thinking is maybe the answer is, we need to put a hold to that. But the first item we have here, I'm going to let John Gallimore, our Technology Services Director, talk to you about GoGov.
So thank you for this opportunity. It's been a while since I've presented anything to the board, so I apologize if I ramble a little bit, but I'll try to keep it as succinct as possible. So a little bit of history on how we got to this point. This was a topic that our departments, particularly Public Safety, brought to us to look at an app to deliver non-emergency information to the public, things like training opportunities or information related to different activities they have going on, events and such. Recreation is also interested in that. So we're starting with a small group, and we expect to expand out to all county departments. So what this project involves is, and we started that about, it's been over a year ago. So we, the idea is to have an app which you can install on your phone, whether it's an iOS or an Android app, and each department would have somebody that's dedicated to providing content to deliver to that app. And we would encourage the public, we would have a marketing campaign for the public to install the app and subscribe to those services, and they would then be able to receive notifications of different types of events. So for example, at the park, when they're having their summer concert series, they would be able to receive maps and event information, things that would be timely, that would be maybe not easy enough to get through Facebook or some other channel. We can link to website links as well. We find that websites are great, but sometimes they don't work very well on a small screen. And people like to use desktops or larger tablets for, to receive, to look at websites. So the app is designed to make it easier to get information in one place. We want to include all departments in this eventually so that we have a single location where citizens can get this information. So that's where we started from. We talked to our current website vendor, and they had a solution, but it was a much more expensive solution. So we shopped around a little bit, looked to see what was available in the marketplace, and we found what we think is a much more affordable approach. This will allow each department to have a content contributor, a content manager. We will provide resources and training for them to bring them up to speed and get the app published. We have, we can get that going in about 30 days. So we haven't started that yet. We wanted to present the concept to you so you had some familiarity with it before we actually got something out for the public. We will have a marketing campaign, so we'll do that through the county website, through Facebook pages and things like that, so folks know, hey, this is a new resource for citizens to get their information. And that way, they can load the app on their phone, they can subscribe, they can register for immediate updates and things like that. So that's kind of the genesis of how we got here. So again, it's an app that departments would use to deliver non-emergency communications. So we don't want to take away from traditional call 911 or hyperreach outreach, outreach program where there might be weather alerts or things like that. This is for non-emergency information in particular. The idea is it's easier to use, and I say easier to use, both for staff to generate and publish content and for the public to be able to access that content as well. It's more affordable, so we found this to be the most affordable product that was available in the marketplace. And so we decided to go ahead and look at contracting with them, which we've already done. So we may be getting a little ahead of ourselves, but we wanted to make sure and take advantage of some cost savings that were available to us. This is something we can quickly implement with departments. So we've asked departments to dedicate an individual as a content creator, contributor, as well as participate in training opportunities to make sure that they make the most of the services available and to be able to publish their content, content, excuse me. It'll be simple to set up and easy for citizens to access. So our department, Technology Solutions, will be working with the content creators in each department. We're going to, again, start out with a small group, make sure we sort of have our feet under us before we kind of push it out to everybody. But the idea is we involve all departments so they have content creators and they can actually distribute information through the app. And then again, this was, the idea kind of came from the Sheriff App. There's nothing wrong with the Sheriff App, but that's sort of dedicated to a particular purpose that the Sheriff wanted to do. It's isolated to that department, and it's really not intended for other non-emergency departments to take advantage of. So we wanted to be able to involve all departments in a single platform to deliver this information. So the, so some examples of departments and the uses that they've demonstrated, that they've indicated would be useful for them. For example, EMS, there would be community training. So if they wanted to invite citizens to come in and participate in an event, there would be a link to a form where they could sign up or register. There might be community paramedic events where there's outreach going on, employee recognition and safety instructions. So this is really meant to be informational, educational, and to deliver content that's relevant to the public. So for 911, there might be public area notifications, so maybe a tree down, a road's blocked. There would be a notification banner on the top so they could quickly access that information. It's not necessarily non-emergency, excuse me, it's not necessarily emergency information, but it's something that we wouldn't necessarily send out on a broader community notification. This would be targeted for folks so they could be able to see what's maybe happening in their part of the county. Things like working fires, traffic accidents, road closures, water outages, things like that. It's just another avenue to distribute this information. And then, as I mentioned earlier, Recreation Department, if they're having an event at the park, they could deliver maps, information about the event, such as where are the bathrooms? How do I get my drinks? You know, how do I, where are the vendors located? Things like that that are really important for the folks at the event, but maybe not so much that we want to, you know, send it out to the whole community. And then also additional information about upcoming events that might be, might be happening at the facilities. So notifications would be community outreach for upcoming meetings, so meetings like this or Planning Board meetings or Recreation Advisory Board meetings. Folks that might be interested in participating in those, this would be a single place to receive that. And again, it's on their phone, so they don't have to remember to go to a website or go to Facebook or which Facebook page am I trying to find the information on? This is one place to find this information. Outreach, it's a better way to reach citizens and interested parties. So folks that are interested, they can sign up and register, and then they receive this information directly to their phone. And then coverage, it's more of a direct audience, so if you're not interested, don't sign up. And it avoids some of the limitations of social media websites or social media pages, such as we push the information. It's not really a means of two-way communication. So we don't have to worry about, hey, I can't make comments, or I want to make a comment, but I'm getting blocked, or my comment's not, it's not appropriate for this particular thing. This is a way for us to deliver information, much like the website, but we would have a link if they wanted to send in some question. They could fill out a form on there, and it would be directed to that particular department to receive that information. So some examples, and this is from another community, there are several communities in North Carolina that are already using this GoGov app. So we could link to a video. We could link to submit a request, so, hey, I'm missing a street sign. So they could fill out the form, submit that, and it goes directly to the department that takes care of that. Maybe there's a way to download contacts for that community, or, excuse me, contacts for that organization. So if they needed to know how to get in touch with Public Work, Public Utilities, or the Planning Department or Recreation Department, we can link to those content pages as well. Promotional materials that we're going to use, as I said, Facebook, social media pages, we'll hand out information hopefully at different activities that are going on, excuse me, going on in the community, newspaper advertising, things like that, which are traditional ways of getting folks to engage. And we find that Facebook is a pretty effective medium for that, so we want to make sure that they have all the opportunities to sign up and register. So notify examples are things like, hey, this event is coming up. Be aware, you might want to sign up for it, get that information. They'll have notifications, just like you receive on your regular device. So maybe not necessarily a weather event, but if you signed up for something or you want to know about those activities, you would receive those notifications on your device and maybe link to the county's job posting page. So if we have openings in different positions, they would be able to go directly to that page. And we wouldn't be taking away from the website pages, we would just be helping people to get to it in a much easier platform. Mark, I didn't know if you had a question?
Well, I was going to ask it at the end.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. You want to ask a question?
Yeah.
So.
I'll ask a question.
There we go.
I am, I am tech illiterate, okay? But I do know on my phone, and this is, this is, I know, kind of individual to the phone, but let's just say that person signs up for the app and they want to know stuff that's going on at the library. Are they able to, to like check that off? And then when Derek and his staff post something, it will come on their phone, library event?
Correct. So they would, they would select which sets of information that they want to receive. So basically, it's a sign up, and when that information is posted, they receive that notification. So if, on your lock screen, if you look on your phone, I'll see if I can do this. Nope, that's the wrong way. Nope. I may be as tech challenged as you are, but I don't have any notifications as a matter of fact. But if you swipe on your screen a certain way, you'll see those banners that show up, and it has a notification on there. So it'll work the same ways. And the reason we decided to go with a native iOS or Android app that's designed for the device is because it uses the features of that device versus the other solutions we looked at was sort of building a scalable webpage that would show up, and you would just load that link to the webpage. This is something that people are used to. So I go to the App Store, I download the app, I sign in and provide some basic contact information. None of the users of this app are being tracked. And GoGov, as a company, made that conscious decision because people are concerned about their privacy. So they don't want to be tracked as they go to these things, they just want to get the information. So it's something that they have great control over as they use the app and decide what they want to get information on.
Second question, and I know when, when Jayman and his staff put up, the tax bills are going out, everybody will want to know about that, so.
Yep, so we can have.
That's a joke, but, but.
I like to know. I know what to say.
Know what to expect.
That's right.
Second question, can we involve the schools with this? If we're going to have like a central repository of information of things that are going on, is there any way we could involve the schools in that?
We'll be happy to reach out to them. They, in the past, tend to want to manage those activities on their own, so we're happy to reach out and involve them. It would be their choice whether.
Do they have a similar app?
I'm not familiar with any.
Okay.
They might have, but I can reach out to them and find out.
Yeah, I just thought it would be.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a resource, and we could certainly put something on there that would direct them to the schools because they want to control the distribution of their own information. So they don't want us to try to supplant that. What they want to do is be able to control how that's presented, made available to the public. So we could direct people to that and just have information that we're not posting ourselves, but it could become available to them. But whether they actually participated as a user, they'd certainly be able to. We could set them up and, you know, allow them to contribute content.
Perfect. Any, any other questions, guys?
What kind of cost is this looking at here?
So the annual cost is $5,400, and that was a bargain from what we looked at other organizations. We got the first six months free, so up until December 31st. They weighed the cost of that. I was also able to lock in a modest annual step increase, which was less than half of what the vendor was looking at. So if you look at most subscriptions, they have sort of a built-in cost escalation. I was able to negotiate a much lower cost. So we're going to pay $2,700 for the last six months of the year, and then the full subscription cost would come in starting July 1. And we're going to budget for that, well, I say we, I won't do it. The next director would budget for that under the Technology Solutions budget, and I've already talked to Brian and Robin about that as well.
Was there a setup fee, an initial sign-on fee? So just that annual fee?
Annual fee. And that was another cost advantage as well, because the other vendors we looked at, there were built-in configuration costs, training costs. This is a company that is wholly owned by the owners. It's not publicly traded. It's not part of a, what do you call it, capital acquisition company or something like that. This is a similar company, or this, this is a wholly owned company. And so we're dealing directly with the people that run the company, and they're hungry. And so they're, they're holding their costs down for us.
Other comments, questions?
Just a comment. This is great, I think, because over the years, you know, there's been times where talking to citizens and they're like, well, it'd been nice to have known that. And it's like, well, it was on the website. So it does require some interactivity with the people making the, making the request or saying they weren't aware, but I do think anything we can do to enhance our communications, because that has been a challenge over the years, and so I think this is good.
It is. We have lots of communication channels, and some would say we have more than we need. I think the more communication that we have, the better. When it's confusing to find what you need and how to get to it, then you're not really doing yourself a service. So the website's great, we can control the content, we have ways of getting feedback on that. But do I go to the website? Do I go to the Facebook page? Am I looking at the same information? Am I look, you know, how do I get to it? Our website has over 1,000 pages on it, so it's, it can, you can go down the wormhole on our website.
Is it going to have any, if you sign up, you can kind of control the content you're interested in, but there is going to be, if you sign up, some overriding information that we can send out? Like if you said taxes are due, et cetera, or tax bills just came out, look at your mail, or?
We can prioritize the notifications that go out to make sure that what's important stays on top. And it's, and of course, the user plays a part in that, too. They have to decide what they want to receive. You can be oversaturated by notifications, and we've all seen that, sign up for too much, and now it just becomes noise at that point. So we, we want to help avoid that, but the idea is to get the site up and, or get the app up and running, get our staff and the user, the users of the system trained, and then make sure that we have a good marketing campaign for the next six months and even longer to get people to sign up and use the app.
Is there any advertising on the app, or is it like, you know, I didn't think so? I just want to make sure.
No, we don't sell space on it. It's not like we're trying to make money off the app. It's designed strictly, we pay for it, it's a service we pay for, just like many other applications and subscriptions, but we're not selling the advertising space. That's not something we're interested in doing.
I think it's a great idea. I have one other question, and this is, again, a little bit in the data space. Does the company that we're working with, do they have any idea how many devices in Davie County that we're talking about in terms of the potential base of folks we would be contacting?
Not really.
Assuming everybody has a phone?
Well, that, that's part of it, but they don't track the users to understand the, the metrics of how many have signed up or what kind of devices they have. There would have to be some tracking involved.
Well, I don't, I'm not asking about that. I'm saying right now, before we do anything, do they have any idea what the potential coverage is in terms of?
So they know our population, and our pricing is somewhat based on our population.
And so they're.
So they're, they're, they're taking those metrics and making assumptions that we have so many adults, we have so many kids between this range, so many seniors, and depending on, you know, the, I guess, the use of mobile phones, we have fewer and fewer people or citizens using landlines anymore. So we're seeing, you know, I would say we probably have 30,000 to 35,000 mobile devices that reside in the county. Now, that's a hard number to quantify because people move around a lot, and they may work here, and they're here part of the day. Some would say they live at their work, right? But sometimes they, you know, may sign up for something just because they want to know, but they don't have any specifics to say, we know there's this many. They make assumptions based on that, on population.
Wonderful. You know, just thinking about something very important that's coming up is the elections. You know, notifying folks that early voting is starting and where they can vote and all these kind of things that would probably be included in that. I think it's a great service, or it sounds like it is.
It's very timely at this time of the year because we have elections, we have the reval coming up, we have other, you know, community events. The Summer Park Series is winding down, but this will give us a chance to prepare for next year and any other, you know, activities or events going on in departments. We want to. We want to be able to promote that and get that information out.
Anything else?
Uh, there's, there's going to be like maybe a section on here, just like you'd have in a website that frequent, like a frequently asked question type sections. What comes to mind with where I used to work and with, you know, you'd get people, we've got, you need to get the same general question about where to go over and over. Like whether it's the courthouse, whether it's the registered deeds office, whether it's where to pay the water bill, where to pay my town water bill, those kinds of things.
So that's a great question. So we have FAQs on most departments. Some don't have any. So the idea would be to be able to, to develop that and sort of condense it into something that would be concise enough where somebody's not feeling like they're reading the encyclopedia, but they actually have the ability to see, you know, how, where is this common information? But also, um, we want people to feel trained on how to use it. And so there is some help documents and, and help information. And I don't take my word for it, but I think there's actually a guided tour. So if you sign up for it, it kind of leads you through the buttons to push. Um, I have to confirm that, but, uh, the idea is to make it easy to sign up, easy to use. And, uh, if you have other ideas like that, we'd love to hear them so that we can make the most advantage of it.
Anything else? John, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all you do.
Yes, sir, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, next we have, um, I really think this is more of a continuation of our series into the update of the 2019 Comprehensive Plan. We went through a series of work sessions last year and then we've had a lot of conversation amongst you all, amongst staff. So, uh, Mr. Easter thought this would be a next right step to take in looking at our future when it comes to growth and development. Um, so I'm going to turn over his presentation to you.
All right. Good morning.
Morning.
Was there any way next time we have this, if we're going to have a morning that felt that good, could we have it outside? My goodness gracious. Great. Well, thank you guys for the opportunity to present today. So today we're going to talk about two things. We're going to talk about the table of uses in the Davie County zoning ordinance and also the subdivision ordinance. So the table of uses, Davie County zoning divides the land into zoning districts. Within each district, land uses are either permitted by right, permitted with conditions, permitted with a special use permit, approved by the project review committee, or they're prohibited. Okay? So the table includes a comprehensive list of land uses and delineates which uses are allowed in each zoning district. In addition, all uses have to be defined in the zoning ordinance. So if you look at the zoning districts in Davie County, these are the zoning districts. So RA and R20 make up, uh, the majority of the county itself. So that's about 98% of the county is RA and R20. And then broken down from that, we have R12, R8, RM. Those are more of the residential zoning districts. RM is the, um, it's the mobile home district. That's where you can have a mobile home park. And then we break it down to some more of the, uh, HM, uh, NB and CS are all kind of more our business zoning districts. Then we have the zoning, uh, the industrial districts. And then we also implemented a new zoning district, which is not this. This was taken from Land Use Plan for the SP zoning district, which is a special, uh, permitted kind of zoning district where we, uh, addressed the solar farms at. So in the table of uses, this indicates, this is kind of the, uh, how to read it. So an X indicates what the permitted use is. An S indicates a special use permit is required. A P, uh, indicates that, uh, it must be the project review committee to ensure compliance with, with the standards and PC are permitted with additional conditions. All right, so here is, this is taken directly from this. So if you want to draw your attention to greenhouses, okay? So it's like the, the third one down. So a private non-commercial greenhouse. If you live in a RA zoning district, you can put a greenhouse up in your backyard permitted by right. Okay? But any other zoning district, if you live in a residential, if you live in R20, R12, R8 or RM, you have to get a special use permit for that. Okay?
Regardless of the size of the greenhouse?
Regardless of the size of the greenhouse. So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And, well, I guess piggyback on what you just said. As long as that greenhouse in this particular example meets building code, y- your answer is right. Regardless of the size.
You know, some people have greenhouses that are this big.
So, so if it's state building code, anything less than 12 by 12 by 12, you, you don't have to get a building permit for any structure. So a greenhouse. So if you want to assemble a 20 by 20 greenhouse in your backyard and you don't live in a RA district, it's not permitted by right. You would have to go through the Board of Adjustments to apply for a special use permit. So for example, uh, if somebody wanted to put a kennel up, okay? So they have a dog kennel and they want to do a kennel. So RA is permitted by right with specific conditions. So in the zoning ordinance, it spells out what you have to do to put a kennel up. So the number of acres, the number of dogs, the fencing and all of that is built into it. It's baked into the cake. So if someone contacts our offices, say, hey, look, I live in RA, I want to do a kennel, then we can turn to the zoning ordinance and say, if you want to do a kennel, you have to meet these specific conditions. So it's kind of spelled out in that with all the uses in here. So I'm going to kind of delineate what the difference is, um, for a special use permit and a rezoning application. Or, so a special use permit, the hearings are quasi-dutational in nature and must follow the requirements of such hearings. Hearsay or opinion cannot be introduced. It's in an essence, it's a, it's a court case. Only facts go involved in that. Those are heard and approved by the Board of Adjustments and only by the Board of Adjustments. So anything in this table of uses that indicates if somebody wants to come in, one of the things I'll point to you, a veterinary service in Davie County. There's no way, nowhere in Davie County by right that you can put a vet office, period. You have to get a special use permit. So in order to put that veterinary clinic, you would have to apply through the Board of Adjustments to do the veterinary clinic and it's an evidence-based hearing. They make the final decision. So it would not come before this board. So if it's a special use permit, it goes through the Board of Adjustments. The Board of Adjustments either denies or approves it and then that's that. If they can't appeal through, uh, I guess the district court is the next means.
Superior Court.
Superior Court, I'm sorry. Yes, Brett.
Quick question on that. Is that typical, atypical, or is that something that, like when you use that veterinary example, is that something that would possibly be rewritten? Or is that just the way it goes in all counties?
No, no, it's not. It's individual. This meets the needs and needs of the counties. I know the trend for planning and zoning statewide is going away from the special use permit and they're going more to the conditional rezonings. So we can get conditions baked into the cake about what we want to. I know one of the local municipal municipalities, well, Moxville, I'll tell you the town of Moxville, they pretty much did away with all special use permits. We went through that, did away with all of them except for a couple of things. We bake the conditions in it. When you come, the applicant sits before me and says, I want to do XYZ. There's a list of conditions. You got to have a minimum lot size. You got to do the buffering. You got to do the fencing. You got to do this, hours of operations. All of that is baked into the cake. So if they cannot meet any of those requirements, then it's a moot point anyway. Does that make sense?
Trying, is it trying to eliminate and make it a little more consistent because you've got the restrictions or whatever built in?
Correct, yeah.
Instead of like this land over here faces, you know, it's facing different challenges.
Oh, exactly. So, so for example, we'll, we'll take the vet clinic, for example, or let's, let's do the greenhouse. Okay? Let's do the greenhouse. So if we wanted to say, we're going to permit conditions with greenhouse. If you need to put a greenhouse up, you have to have at least two acres of property. Those are the conditions and only size of the greenhouse can be less than 10,000 square foot, whatever. So when they come to me, we've already know that. And the greenhouse has to be 30 foot away from all property lines. So a lot of those conditions are baked into it where if you put a greenhouse up in Davie County, those are conditions, those are conditions are met. With a special use permit, I could come in and say, I want to put a 100,000 square foot greenhouse up and I want to put it five foot from the property line and we can implement those conditions. It's based on a case-by-case basis. So when you go from this route where you permit things with conditions, it's kind of a carte blanche. It's equal across the board. Does, does that make sense? Okay. So it kind of explains. Anybody have any questions about the special use permit or?
I guess for those that might be watching us on streaming or whatever, what you're describing now is what we currently have.
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay? And so then you're going to make reckon, recommendations that, uh?
Yeah, yeah. So that's what we currently have. So if you look here, these are all the uses here that require a special use permit currently in Davie County. So a greenhouse, depending on the zoning district. Some zoning districts are permitted by right. Some districts are not permitted by right. Okay? Um, the, the ones that are highlighted in yellow, the massage parlor, manufacturer home hardship, mobile home park, airport, temporary sawmill, vet, art studio, all those, those are nowhere in Davie County that you can put those unless you get a special use permit. So like mini golf, if somebody wanted to put a mini golf course up, a putt-putt or whatever, mini golf course up anywhere in Davie County, it would require a special use permit. It's not permitted by right anywhere.
Not to get, go down a rabbit hole, but mining and dredging, I thought that was all governed by the state.
It, it is. So a lot of these things are indicated, permits, operations and everything associated with it are all governed by the state. But land use, we control land use. So if somebody wants to, we can say, you cannot mine or dredge here. It's more the land use. It's just like, it's the same thing with, with some of these things. Um, we do have, uh, landfills are one of them. So I think landfills are on here. So packaged treatment plants are on here. We as the county, we can dictate what areas of the county that is done, but any permits, anything associated with that would have to go through the state. Uh, a lot of times the municipalities, I'm, I'm currently dealing with, uh, Vulcan over some, looking at some, some of the stuff they're doing here. In order to get all the necessary permits through the state, the government, whatever, you're going to get approval through the county via special use permit, via planning board approval or whatever. They have to, that, that's the first start before they go anywhere else. They have to make sure they can do it in the county.
So you're saying if I wanted to put up a temporary sawmill, I see that.
Correct.
Which I can see me doing that.
Correct.
I need to get a special use permit.
Correct.
Now to me, if I want to go out on my 20-some acres now and set up what I've seen these portable sawmills, uh, and maybe that's a little different, but I, I think it's an overreach, just my opinion.
Well, and, and these.
Without having some, you know.
Right, right, right. And these are things that I think some of these zoning districts, for example, the mobile home park, it requires a special use permit, right? The only zoning district you can put a mobile home park in is a mobile home park zoning district. So the way it currently stands, you would have to have the property rezoned. Then you would have to go get a special use permit. So it's, it's a lot of.
So again, this is what we currently have in place. You're going to make recommendations otherwise.
Well, what I want us to look at the overall view of this is to that way, we can identify specific areas, low hanging fruit that we can address these. I do not believe the, the, the table of uses have probably been addressed in, in 10-plus years. And, and I'll kind of, kind of come to some of that in here. So, uh, rezoning. So if you rezone a property, it's heard by the planning board. Goes through a hearing through the planning board. The planning board makes a recommendation. They can either deny, approve, th- those are two things that are for. And then that comes before this board and this board would make the final decision associated with it. So you would have the final say-so with that. So one thing that I want to draw your attention to is this is a blog post, Coats Cannon. And I know Ed is very familiar with Coats Cannon. So David Owens, this is for the, uh, North Carolina Institute of Government. So there's case law about this and, and I, I think, uh, Commissioner Barnett, uh, Commissioner, I apologize. County Manager Barnett included this blog post in here. In essence, what it states is if there's not a specific defined use in the table of uses that prohibits, allows or denies use in the county, it is thus mean you can do it. So for example, in this blog post, they talk about electronic gaming establishments, your sweepstakes places. They talk about shooting ranges. If our zoning ordinance doesn't specifically address those, it allows someone to do it. So you could, if it's, if we have something similar to it, we can say, yeah, it kind of looks this way. We're going to call it this. But if it's this kind of standalone unicorn of a use and we don't address it in our zoning ordinance, it's, it's deemed in our state law, uh, that's been litigated that says you can do it. So this is pretty much saying that local governments really need to look at these table of uses from time to time with trends. What we're getting calls about, what people, what are going, because you, you cannot have a catch-all. I mean, there's no way that you can have a catch-all. Um, so it's a really good opportunity to look at the individual, um, uses or calls that we continue to get that are, that our ordinance doesn't address. So what we get repeated calls about are areas or looking at the zoning ordinances of surrounding municipalities here in Davie County. These are the areas that I think we need to address pr- pretty quick that we get repeated calls about. Um, the electronic gaming establishments, they're not dressed in our zoning ordinance. Campgrounds and RV parks, we are dressed, but it's very minuscule. We don't have a real clear definition about what that is. Um, stealth towers. It's not a huge, you know, uh, cell tower. It's a little bit small, portable and they can go in various. RVs as dwellings. We get constant calls about people wanting to live in RVs. RVs aren't allowed by building code to be a permanent structure, but I, I think we really need to address that because we get constantly calls about this. ATMs, we don't have any allowance for ATMs anymore. So we could say, hey, look, we need to address those. Service kiosks, these twice the ice or these ice vending machines or these, we're starting to see more and more of these huge vending machines that just set up in a country in a rural setting. How do we need to address those? Event centers, uh, on a small scale. Farmers markets, we don't address a farmer's market. Um, we do have temporary seasonal stuff, but we don't address farmer's market. Um, micro breweries, micro distilleries or micro wineries. We do not address that anywhere in our zoning ordinance. Um, we do address wineries on a large scale, but those are more of Department of Ag on a farm. But if somebody wanted to go and build a, a micro winery in an old convenience store, we don't address it. Um, tiny homes. I wish I had a nickel every time I got a call about I wanted to build a tiny home. Um, NC DOI, who, who handles building code, has a clear definition of what dining homes are. We just would like to incorporate that into our, um, zoning ordinance. RV and boat storage. It's not clear. We do have self-storage, but we don't. We get a lot of calls about people want to do RV and boat storage. I just think we need to address that. Um, we're starting to get more and more calls about shipping containers used as accessory storage buildings. Everybody wants to get a good deal and they want to use a shipping container. We don't address it. Do we need to address it? Uh, the sporting clubs, I know that's been coming around. That's kind of come through and we've had a, a couple of things that went through the planning board. Maybe we have an opportunity to, to, to write that the way we want it to. Uh, electric vehicle charging stations, uh, we don't, we don't address those. You know, where do we want to put those? Do we want to kind of minimize where they go or do we want to put conditions around them? And also drinking establishments. Nowhere in our zoning ordinance does it cover any kind of, like club, bar, any kind of stuff like that. So I think those are the things that we really need to look, um, to address.
Quick question on this.
Right.
I think there are two areas when I see somebody, if they're out there watching this. One school of thought is you're wanting to make it more restrictive, but a lot of this stuff, it's like you're just wanting to clarify it.
Correct.
And actually, because it's really hard to do some of this stuff.
Correct, absolutely. And I'm not, I'm, by no means are we looking for more. There's a lot of gray area or areas that we really, really need to address to, to tighten it up. So the citizens and all about transparency, we can say, these are the expectations of what it is. If you want to do this use, this is what, what we're looking to do. This is where it can go. This is not where it can go. This is the expectations for that. This is what, what we need to address.
But the flip side of that is we've got some things that we, as a community, don't really want that probably could easily show up somewhere.
Correct. And, and if, and if we, if we identify those areas, so let's say we do not want, oh, I don't know, I can't even think of something. We want, we don't want whatever. I'm not going to name specifics, but we define that it is not right for Davie County. We could specifically identify it, define it and include it in the table uses and prohibit it everywhere. If we didn't want some kind of very, a, a, a nuclear waste dump, whatever, we could identify that in the zoning ordinance and we could write it. If we didn't want some kind of very, a, a, a nuclear waste dump, whatever, we could identify that in the zoning ordinance and we could write it out and it's nowhere permitted by right.
So we can, we, whether we have done this, I think you addressed it in the yellow on the other, like, adult, adult entertainment places, not necessarily bars, but adult entertainment, we can prohibit those?
No, to, to my knowledge, I do not think we can, tho- those are included in our zoning ordinance, okay? Um, and I think general statute, I want to say it's one forty-three, is it one forty-three that, that requires? But they're more restrictive, so many, you know, you have to be so many foot from a church, so many foot from a home, so many things, you allow that. But now the massage parlors, anything that, that's more of a, and it's defined statutorily, the, the General Assembly has a dine, define what an adult establishment is. And it is in our table of uses.
So, so you're telling me, we can, we can restrict someone, a, an elderly couple living in their RV, but we can't restrict an adult entertainment, and I hope everyone knows what I mean by that.
Yeah, 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 I, I, I think through, through the zoning ordinance, we could adopt a local ordinance not allowing it.
Yeah.
But I think, and, and, and Ed could probably help me out with this a little bit more, we can restrict where it goes. I don't know that we can specifically, unless it's an ordinance, and, and Ed could, can address this.
The court, the courts say that you can't stop it, but you can certainly restrict it and you can put it in, uh, the, uh, in your ordinance where it's at. And I'll, to such an extent that, uh, it probably wouldn't be feasible for them to, to build it there.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's the clarification with that, but now if we adopted by ordinance specific things, I know there's dry counties, there's su- stuff like that, that would be more of a county level, but, but the zoning ordinance, I think.
Well, the people vote on that part of it.
Correct.
People vote on that, so we, we're not going to restrict what the people vote to do, but there are certain things we should be able to.
Right.
Yeah, I think, I think before we go to the next section of the presentation, because really it's two parts, um, before we leave the table of uses, I think it's important for you to, to recognize what we just discussed, that if you can't prohibit something, you can definitely restrict it. And then I think on top of what Commissioner Seth was saying, not necessarily want to be, uh, restrictive as much as making sure the, making sure the table of uses reflects what you want as a community. So i- um, i- if you want your private greenhouses to be on two acres because that has a certain feel or look, then we can definitely set that up moving forward to reflect that based on the way you want the community to look.
Well, you know, our, our world changes, the dominoes are rolling in such a, i- i- you know, electric, electronic gaming establishments. Twenty years ago, we wouldn't have even thought about that.
Correct.
See, so it's like almost every five years or so, we need to go in to re- look at everything.
Well, and, and, and to be, to be honest, uh, Chairman Jones, I think we need to look at this every year, and, and we're going to see trends. Like now, the next thing now is I, I get a call, tiny homes and tiny homes have turned into barn dominiums, everybody wants a barn dominium. So there's these little nuanced things that, that, that happened from a time. And I think that this board and, and the county as a whole, if we can lead from ahead and anticipate things and address it. If they never come, they never come, but at least we've got it and we can control it, so that way we're not trying to put the toothpaste back in the tube per se. We've already addressed those things as we see trends going throughout the state. And you guys see stuff and hear stuff all around, say, hey, what about this? Also the same thing with, with some of the municipalities, I think just with the rural nature of Davie County, probably not going to get some of those things. But if we do, I, I just think it's a, it's a great opportunity for us to be able to kind of make it fit uh, the look and feel of, of, of the community as a whole, and we can, you know, anticipate where they go. Like I said, some of the things we can't prevent, but we can definitely control.
And also too, picking on like the barn dominium, if, if we don't define what that looks like from a community standpoint, and then, uh, somebody decides to do it on their own, and then we create that firestorm, and, and at that point, we're too late. And, and this way, even in the Coats Cannon blog, it talks about looking at this, if not annual, at least every so many years, updating it to reflect what's nuanced and new out there now, so that we're ahead of the game the best that we can be. And also, we probably should have said this from the beginning, but just a disclaimer that what we're discussing in terms of zoning and land use is strictly just the county. Obviously, I think you all get calls about land use situations that are involved within the municipalities or the ETJ. Um, those concerns would, un- unfortunately, or, or fortunately, however you want to look at it, fall back on our municipal partners to handle and address those. Um, luckily for us, we have an inside track on those, so we can be as more uniform as a whole county. But obviously, we can't tell Moxville or Meeterun or Kulaumee exactly what to do from a land use standpoint. So I just wanted to make sure that was out there on the record.
But one thing to keep, want to keep saying this is, it's also an approach too, to make it easier for people to do certain things without going into a situation where it so-called quasi judicial, but then it becomes who lawyers up with the best lawyer to fight a situation. I mean, in other words, no matter what your opinion is, if a micro brewery has to go through that, and then for some reason there's somebody in the neighborhood that doesn't like it and wants to fight it in a special use and bleed that person dry, that might be, that may not be good to have right beside of a church, but it, but if you've got fifty acres, you ought to be able to have a way to use your acreage to do something, and it also brings money into the county too, so.
Sure.
Just for the record, I mean, if we identify these and take action on them, further refine them, everything's going to be grandfathered up to this point, I mean, clearly, we've got RV and st- boat storage throughout the county.
Correct, correct, yeah.
And so obviously we have campgrounds and RV parks.
Correct.
So nothing we're going to do is going to impact that.
Correct, correct, what we're doing is going forward, creating, w- w- we're trying to fit with some of these things and some of the uses, we're trying to fit that square peg in that round hole and make it fit something. But then we can say, well, why don't we do this, so, so do we need to treat mini warehouse storage the same as boat and RV storage? Well, I, I don't think they're the same animal, so we say, okay, i- i- so we address boat and RV stores. We're saying all boat and RV stores has to have X amount of land, has to have fence high, has to do all these things, and the conditions are baked in it. The same thing with these, um, uh, with some of the campgrounds. We go into a campground, if you don't have X amount of acres, moot point, we're not going to have this discussion, it's not allowed. So, so those are the things and it opens everybody up to the conditions are set for prior to we going this. And the, the uniformity it is, it makes it is, so, and that's what I said, if we have a boat and RV storage here, well, depending on the community, depending on where it's at, somebody could go through and they could be nothing. We could say, you just got to put a fence up. Well, other ones, because of the influx of people in the community, well then we want a fifteen-foot-high fence, we want a row of trees, we want all these things. So you're getting kind of a hodgepodge mishmash, well, that person had to do it, but I didn't have to do it. But if we can spell out the conditions initially and have just a baseline of conditions, what we want to see for every one of them have going forward. And we can always add conditions to it if it requires a rezoning, but I think if we have those baseline conditions of what we want to see, i- i- the applicant coming to us or the prospective developer has a better understanding as what, as what thought of him, and it's more uniformity. I, I, yeah, I, I agree. Any other questions with this?
But let me add one more thing about that, but a lot of the things like boat and RV and all this stuff is somewhat permitted by right, the ones that we see out there anyway, because of the way they've been zoned.
Yeah, but i- in, in the zoning district, yeah, so if you're in a, a highway business zoning, um, which is highway business zoning, which is, you know, y- you could do that there, some neighborhood you could do that, but, but i- if you want to look at this, we're looking at probably right around five hundred acres, that's already currently zoned like that in Davie County, thereabouts, it's not a lot, it's not a lot. So the majority of any of these uses, what we're going to see, a lot of these commercial uses, unless it's going into an existing, you know, this place tears down and we're going in there, more than likely, people are going to be coming before either the Board of Adjustments to have the property either special use or rezoned, or they're going to be coming before this board to have it changed. So we just don't have a whole, a whole abundant of already, uh, currently zoned property that allows for a lot of these business uses.
The, the law states that anybody can use their land for anything they want to, as long as it doesn't, doesn't harm their neighbors and that sort of thing. Basically, is what the, the court cases say, and I, and zoning then restricts that. And I, uh, going back to your RV and, and, and boat storage as an example, uh, right now, we don't have RV and boat storage anywhere in our, uh, zoning ordinance, is that correct?
Correct.
And also, if I want to, want to buy five acres right next to the entrance of Oak Valley and put our, uh, say not five acres, say twenty acres, if it's available, and, and put an RV and boat storage unit right there, you're going to have a lot of people in Oak Valley screaming and shouting about that, but I could do it. But if we have it in our, in our, um, ordinance, then we can either restrict it and not have it there, or we can put certain conditions on it, right now, we can't.
And, and, and in the past, we've kind of said, the intent of that is more the, the self-storage, more self-storage. So we're kind of saying, we're calling it self-storage, you know, we're calling it self-storage, you meet the self-storage, the warehousing, the storage facilities, outdoor, indoor. But do we want those same animals to look the same? You know, and, and those are when you get, sometimes you can get in the weeds with this.
A- and we've done that, but if it ever went over to the courthouse, it might stand up.
Right, exactly, exactly. Any other questions about this?
But by not, one comment, but by not defining this better, we allow for one area because of maybe the complexion of the neighborhood as far as who wants to fight it versus another area that takes this so-called quasi judicial and makes this work here, but then here because of my motion or whatever else, it doesn't work.
Right, right, and, and that's one thing, the more conditions that we add on the front end, the more of a lot of the issues are taken away from it. That, that is my big approach, I, I love sitting down with a prospective developer and I lay it out, if this is what you want to do, these are just the bare minimum, we're going to look at fencing, we're going to look at buffering, we're going to look at setbacks, that's what you got to do. Minimum land size, I'm not going to, i- if you don't bring those to the table, we're not, we're not moving on with this. So I think it takes a lot of this, you know, kind of what I said, here we do it this way and here we do it this way. It's kind of uniformity throughout the, the county with, with baked into the conditions to begin with. So everybody knows the rules of the game before we sit down to play. Alright, so the next thing we want to talk about is our subdivision ordinance and going forward and look at some, some of the issues with subdivision ordinances. So in our subd- this is taken directly from our subdivision ordinance, a major subdivision is defined as all subdivisions containing three or more lots. And a minor subdivision is defined as it's not a major subdivision, so it's less than that, I know, it's, that's, that's what it is. So major subdivision, so I know you guys have seen this before and it talks about the individual lot size with dealing or making a major or minor subdivision, talks about the square footage, um, talks about, uh, some of the setbacks associated with that. So we're looking at in ninety-eight percent of the county, which is RA and R twenty, where these are allowed, permitted by right, we're looking, the, the minimum lot size is going to be thirty thousand or forty thousand square foot. So, and we do have, um, R eight and R twelve, which are going to be a lot smaller than that, but, but we're dealing with sewer and things associated with that. So we don't, we don't have a lot of that. This is something we did at a, that kind of spawned, Commissioner Shof, uh, uh, kind of worked with us about this. Um, lots in a major subdivision that are accessed by publicly indicated road shall be a minimum of a hundred and fifty foot wide. So this is something that we implemented to address some of the concerns of the community and the county associated with development. These are items that we're not going to be able to control, okay, this board, we're not going to be able to control it as a county as a whole. We cannot control overall growth and expansion, other than where it goes in the individual areas. Um, we cannot control the design or the look of the home. Um, we cannot control who builds it or who develops the property. We cannot control who the targeted homeowner is, what group, what it is, we cannot, and we cannot control the cost of construction. These are pretty much things throughout the state, throughout the nation, we're not, well, I will say the state, we, we cannot control these things. What we can control, and this is where, this is where we can control the lot size. We can control what the setbacks are, we can control the density. We can control whether or not we require pedestrian access, which will be sidewalks baked into a subdivision. We can control how much open space, okay, green space, open space. We can control common area, we can say all subdivisions have a specific, major subdivisions have a speci- specific amount of common area. We can control buffering, we can say this buffer for this or that, we can dictate in that. We can control the accessibility, all major subdivisions have to have two points of entrance from a road, have to have three points of entrance, we can control that. We can control whether or not we require ornamental lighting, we're going to say, hey, we want to put some nice lighting in this subdivision. We can control whether or not curb and gutter is required. We can control requirements associated with fencing heights, design, style, look, we can control that. We can control entryways, we can say, hey, look, we want to have a fifty-foot-wide entryway with a fountain or whatever. Signage associated in it, we can control streetscaping, hey, we want you to put some, uh, sidewalks, some ornamental lighting and some nice trees in this subdivision. And we can control, this board can have final approval of all major subdivision site plans that comes before this. So if a specific developer sits down with me and sits down with Johnny Lambert and we're having discussions and, and, and environmental help folks and they're looking to do a subdivision, and we work through everything, go through the TRC, you know, Fire Marshal's Office is involved, and we get everything situated, and we design, we can require final approval of the site plan to go before this board, is this what we want to see? We'll say and, and look, in, in conversations we have, development's coming, okay? I don't know that we can stop it, I don't know that we can prevent it, but we can control how we want it to look, we can control what it looks like. And we'll say, uh, there's a big push for this around other municipalities throughout Davie County that going for all development, I think the same sentiment is heard here, is heard at other boards, but we want it to fit the concise look of we want what it to look like in Davie County. So these are, these are things that I would say that we as, as, as a, as a municip- or we as a county and this is a board that we can directly bake into the cake and control. Questions?
The only thing I would ask is, um, um, in terms of the marketplace we're in right now and a discussion I've had with folks this week about large blocks of property, not necessarily in Davie County, being brought up, being bought up all over the state. Um, um, uh, where are you in, for instance, the discussion of, there's a lot here. You've got, you know, there's a lot here, where are you guys in terms of the planning board and your department in setting? We're, we're not going to have time to plot along
Right.
a- as a Board of Commissioners and define what all this is. Are, where are you guys on defining and recommending and bringing this forward to us?
What, where we're at with that, in the planning board meeting, we, we have had discussions, we've had discussions to address tons of this stuff. But as it stands now, kind of want to get a consensus, low hanging fruit, kind of like what we did with a hundred and fifty-five wood lot, lot, because all of this would have to go through the planning board approval to go through this board, what do we want to see? I know in the town of Moxville, we've addressed a lot of these things, I have had a couple of developers are coming through and I've kind of told them, we're looking to do sidewalks and streetscapes in there, we're going to do that, we want it to fit. W- w- we're looking at the ability to make it fit the community, because it's coming. And every developer that I've talked to in some of these larger subdivisions, small subdivisions, they've said, okay, no problem. Like, they're, they're not, there's no concern, you know, it's kind of baked into it. So from this board, I guess what I would like for you guys to say is what areas do you specifically want to target? We go back to the planning board, I know this is a big extensive list, but go back to the planning board and come with some specific meat and potatoes. This is what we look like, is this what you want to, want to do?
I guess then the question would be, if you have dealt with this in municipalities, if you have, if you have municipalities across the state and counties across the state that are, that have attempted to deal with this, could you, because all of this seems important to me.
Right, exactly.
Could you not bring us, uh, examples that we could look at or some things that you all have already
Right.
addressed? One of the issues that we're trying to deal with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, this Jason, a brief rabbit, is the problem of, of, um, municipalities annexing out beyond, uh, by request, beyond their city limits. And so that's one issue we've got to deal with.
Right.
That's a little aside from this, but if we can, um, i- i- it seems like this is a, this, this is a, a, an urgent issue. Uh, and so I don't know that any of this to me is low hanging fruit. Uh, it's all low-hanging
Yeah, it's all hanging fruit, right, right.
in terms of, of uh, what we can do to control uh, massive housing developments.
And I will say, in 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 all these, these, these would not affect the minor subdivision. It would not affect exempt subdivisions if you had, um, i- i- if a gentle lady or gentleman wanted to give four acres of lot to their childrens, it's not gonna affect that, those are exempt. This is for the large scale, it's not gonna exempt, or it won't affect that existing two-acre lot and that young couple wanted to build that house on, it would not accept, it would not affect that. This would affect the developer coming in, wanting to do a community. You know, we've got a call this week uh, here in the county of of wanting to put up eighty-five homes. You know, another, another piece of properties, hey, with just kinda the the preliminary work. So that, that's what I'm saying, development is coming, it's coming, we can't curtail it, we can't, we're not gonna be able to stop it. But we can control it, in in the fact that we can make it fit the needs and the looks of the county and the community as a whole by these, these things. And and, and so, it's one of those things, how much, how much, you know, input does this board want to have? You know, and and one of the things that we put is final approval um, uh, by this board. If it gets to do, it would be submitted after we look at it, a design with everything, and it would be submitted to the board for, you know, as a consent of general item, I don't know, to take a ruling on it, say, hey, look, are we okay with this? Um, so this is something I know that's tending to look, um, having d- discussions with, with, with other areas about people doing these things, that they, they want input, there is such a concern throughout the state and the communities about growth and development, we want it to make sure it's right. You know, it's, it's one of those things, it's coming, but we want right growth and development.
Well, I think that, I think to answer your question, I think what we could probably do based on the conversation today, um, cause I think what we really wanted to gather from you today was, do you want us to take that next step? And it seems like based on your question, that's the feel that I get, is that uh, is that we can look at those things that we can bring back to you in a quicker manner that are based on other locations that they've already implemented for you to review.
Well, we don't, we, we, we're not asking to become Hilton Head.
No.
You know what I mean?
No.
But, but, but the people of this county clearly have spoken and they want some control on this type of thing. And so, uh, I think we could, we could have a whole special work session
A hundred percent.
on this, once you're ready to recommend.
A hundred percent.
And um, you know, where we can ask questions and see it preliminarily. And then uh, you know, one of the things I would love for us to do too, and I don't wanna chase another rabbit, is make sure that on commercial development, uh, that we get those, we have to approve those site plans too. So that we're not
A hundred percent do that to?
We don't have, we don't approve zoning for developments and then all of a sudden, the site plans change.
And we don't have a clue.
So.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm sorry, Johnny, you go.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
But can we, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, you.
I had uh, one particular issue and, and it's a safety issue as much as anything. We've got along some of the major thoroughfares in this county, we've had people that buy the road frontage and put up twenty-five houses in a little over a half a mile. And every one of them has a driveway going out into that main road.
Right.
Is there any way that the DOT will let us control the number of curb cuts that go onto that main road? Can we make them
Can we make them?
put in a road that turns in it as a development and then they turn off of that?
We, we, we could, we could introduce that in our subdivision ordinance that said majors or subdivisions with X amount of homes that are this, that, you have to require another entrance in and stuff like that. So, so yeah, we can, we can a hundred percent, we can bake that into the ordinance with that, define what a major subdivision is. And that's something that we can change the definition of a major subdivision. Is those, those four lots, really concerned about that? Still considered a major subdivision, but if we say, okay, lots over this, you have to do this. So yet, we, we one hundred percent can do that, we, we, we can, we can.
Well, that would not only help with the safety issues, but with the aesthetics of what's being built as well.
Absolutely, and and with addressing the hundred and fifty-foot-wide lots now, we've kind of addressed that too.
That, that has helped.
That has helped, but but still, there's still a lot of those down the road that we can do this. So, so the design, the look, like what I said, the accessibility, the number of entrances, those are things that we control. But you know, General, General Assembly is pretty clear, we cannot control the builder, the, a- all those individual things, we can't do it. But we can control the design and the scope of the, the entirety of the development. But, you know, what the houses look like, that's what HOAs are for. This is not an HOA, and we're not gonna go down that road like, like what Commissioner Jones said, it, it's, we're not gonna be Hilton Head. You know, we're not, we're not looking to do that, but what we're looking to do is to make sure and address some of the concerns of the community as a whole.
Can you, um, I mean, unless anybody objects, one of the things I'd like to see maybe specifically look at is how setbacks could help with some of this. Um, also look at the, you know, why we got forty thousand and thirty thousand? Really, it's kinda vague as to where forty is and where thirty is, or does it need to be one, does it need to be the other? Is there areas that are more rural, that forty fits? I mean, what, you know, just some type of suggestions on that would be
And 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 we could even go and said, if your major subdivision has lots that are five acres or more, then you don't have to do this, 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 and this. You know, so there's a yin and yang, a give and take, can't be a catch-all, it can't be there. And there's gonna be things that come up, and then baked into this too, it would also give the ability for the board, the final approval, to waive some of the conditions based upon that. Well, look, I don't wanna do this or this, but I'm, you know, I can't get my green space, but yet I'm gonna put, I'm gonna do an easement to the greenway, or I'm gonna put this trail, or I'm gonna do these other amenities, not for this. So there, that is baked into it, we, I've written some ordinances that allow some give and take and some flexibility. It's not rigid, but it's like, hey, we're willing to give this if you're willing to give this and do this. So, so, so I've kinda, you know, written that into some, some ordinances that I've worked on in the past with this as well.
And these conservation areas, if I'm calling them right? Or the, I'd love to see the planning board look at, you know, those areas are in there for a reason.
Correct.
So then I think we need to come up with ways on how it's subdivided in a minimal, you know, what are the minimum lot sizes or what comes into play? Because there's no need to have a, you know, a creek area, you're wanting to protect it, it's already in there for a reason. So then why would we wanna open it up to putting a hundred houses there if we can say this would be appropriate to put five-acre lots or whatever?
Sure. And that, the way it currently stands now, ninety-eight percent of the county is RA and R twenty, like what we said before. And there's no differentiation, it's thirty thousand or forty thousand square foot, no matter where it's at. If it's in that zoning district, so like we do have areas that are conservation areas, we do have areas that are whatever, but it's just if it's RA or R twenty, which, like what I said, ninety-eight percent of the county is, you, you can, you can, it's thirty thousand, forty thousand square foot lots.
And please double down and explain to people, because I want people to hear this so we don't get calls or whatever about restricting things, is that this is not to restrict the, a narrow lot that's already established because it's not being subdivided. It's not to hurt these familial subdivisions, et cetera. Those are okay as they are, so.
And and the overwhelming majority of developers who develop here are already developing in other municipalities. They're already in, in other communities, they're already used to this. That, that they don't, they go, oh, okay, no problem. But they're not gonna do it unless they have to do it. And that's kinda where it is, we can ask and ask and they can be, oh, we can do this and do this, but like what we said, unless it's kinda baked into it, the approval process, they're, they're not gonna do it. And and uh, they're willing to, most of the developers that I deal with are really willing to. But then again, going into this, if we know this is what it takes to develop in Davie County and these are the restrictions or these are the requirements, they decide whether or not they wanna go here. It's the same way if I wanna develop in Hilton Head, I know what's expected in Hilton Head, I don't have to develop in Hilton Head, I wanna come to Davie County. So that's, that's where we're at.
And you're, you, you, you know, you're, you're telling us that uh, we cannot uh, address the issues of what goes on in the municipalities.
Correct.
Which we get tons of calls on
Correct.
and comment on.
Correct.
But you're telling us that the municipalities are dealing with these issues too, they're readdressing what they're going to?
Yeah, I can speak, you know, cause I, I, I do, I, I work very close, well, I guess I do the planning and zoning for the town of Moxville. Same concerns in the municipality of town of Moxville, hearing the same thing. And uh, th- th- their board has a lot of the same, exact same concerns as this board. Um, they are looking at, and we are working behind the scenes to address a lot of those concerns, like a hundred, like everything in this, they're looking to address there. Like, these are the same things that they're looking to address, that we're looking to address that now. They have a little bit, a little nuanced in there because the sewer and some mixed-use developments and some small, low-scale commercial, you know, small restaurants baked into some of these communities that we're looking to kinda incorporate in that as a whole. But yeah, for the most part, all of these same things are being addressed. Um, we approved a, uh, at the last uh, Moxville uh, planning board meeting, something, a, a development that has this baked into it, that would have to go through um, uh, final approval through the town board and it's a subdivision. So, the, the, the same address every planning board meeting, every um, town board meeting, the citizens of the community are concerned about growth and look. And then we don't want it to just, we, we, we're concerned about it. So I think that, that, yeah, thi- this is happening throughout, through, I mean, you know, I'm sure some, some counties don't, you know, come on, come on, come on, because there's not a lot going on, but, but we're such a, a, a attractive place that people want to live and 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 they're coming here.
So this discussion has been taking place within the planning board or just staff?
Well, with staff and the planning board, we, 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 a lot of these concerns, not from a formal, like we talk about New Year's, we hadn't had a meeting in a while, but
That's what I was gonna say, when are you talking about? Cause you haven't been having a meeting.
We hadn't had a meeting in a while, but in the past with addressing with the subdivision ordinance, there's still the concerns are there. I've kinda said, hey, look, we're gonna be addressing, the table of uses is coming with addressing. So, just some of these things that have an opportunity to present you guys, something that, that fits whatever, but I'm not gonna bring you something that's just a, you know, hey, we're not gonna deal with this.
Well, well, I say that to say this, you do need to have a discussion with the planning board and maybe you do have, need to have a meeting when you don't have anything before you. I've had more than one planning board member to say to me, they wish they had more training, they wish they had more guidance, they wish you had more discussion instead of waiting till an issue is put in their face.
Right.
So especially if we're gonna start making some changes and adjustments, you maybe need to have a meeting whether you have an issue or not and it'd just be a sharing meeting. And another thing you just brought up that you have had somebody talk to you about a new development. I have several times, it may not have ever gotten to your ears, but several times I have requested if you could give us updates, heads up, information regarding things that are coming, being requested, being looked into. And I still have not ever gotten those, I've asked several times in the past year. If that's something you could do, I mean, we would really like to have a heads up that something's coming instead of when we drive by and there it is.
Right, right.
I mean.
Well, s- some of the changes, the General Assembly has changed, a lot of those in the county would all start environmental health.
Mm-hmm.
It would all go through the local environmental health and they would all start. Now, with the laws that you can hire private licensed soil scientists and completely and utterly bypass environmental health, like some of the developments, we know about them, when they contact and reach out to utilities and say, hey, look, can we get water? Or we're doing wells, and we might not even hear anything about it. So, the, the, the gr- the growth and development as a whole is changed. Um, there's a lot more private stuff involved and the, then the need for the local government is kinda diminished. But for the most part, you know, sometimes we'll just get a call and say, hey, look, we're looking at doing this and we never hear back. You know, but, but when it gets to some of the stuff and some of the plats, you know, um, you know, yeah, I can, I can definitely get everybody involved.
As much as you all can, it would just be nice to know, you know, it would just be nice for us to kinda have a little bit of, of a heads up on when something like that is coming or may be coming, especially if it's major.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think we're at, we're not necessarily asking to be involved, just notify.
Yeah.
Yeah, just know.
Yeah, I understand, I understand, yeah.
But now, it and true though, some of the things that we've seen coming up or we're getting questions about some parcels that were already approved and it's, they were delayed or they came back to it.
Some of the ones, we've, we had a couple that dropped my lap that was done, that they'd come in for the final plat approval and I wasn't even here, I wasn't even employed here. And I was like, wh- what is this? So, some, some of the developments, just with whatever reason, they've taken their time to get to this point. And then also some of them, they'll pop up and go back down, they'll pop up and go back down, or it won't meet, or they need X amount of lots and all that. Um, but, but ten of the ones in the municipality, um, you know, and normally we sit down, the final look until they get the, the, the septic's figured out, you know, that proposed a hundred lots at the end all, when they get the septic can turn into forty lots. I mean, to be quite honest with you, it's so, but normally in the municipality, sewer, 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 so if they got the capacity, they're gonna do what they can do.
Yeah, you can go to Andy's store and you can, you can find out exactly what's going across from where I live.
Yeah.
And they know for sure, but no, I say that
Yeah.
because they're going through that issue with perking and all that.
Yeah, and and to be honest, we, they, we've, I've talked to three different developers about wanting to do fifteen different things out there. So I don't, I don't even know where they're at in the stage or, or anything to even sit down. And all major developments that'll go through a, a technical review committee. So when the TRC will sit down with, with uh, utilities, you know, we reach out to DOT, Fire Marshal's office is involved. We review the plans to make sure it meets all the code, to make sure there's any inference, there's a longer list of people that we invite to look at to it. But some of these things are just preliminary, we don't get to that point because it can change, they could reconfigure everything out there. So, um, some of these things are just in the very preliminary, you know, infancy of, of the developments before it gets to that point.
But I'm not saying they know things we should know, I'm saying they know things that they have spread around as the gospel and
Yeah, I know.
And a lot of these.
With all kinds of the Amazon and Publix, and I could tell you all kinds of the great things that we hear coming to Davie County.
But if we have a heads up from you, then we can put a little water on some of those rumors sometimes.
Right.
Because, you know, just like the GoGov app, we want to inform citizens, we're just asking for a little information.
Sure, sure, I understand.
Not to mention, um, anything, we, 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 the group we've left on this discussion too, that has a big effect on whether these things get approved and how the, the speed at which they get approved also is the state. So any project that's gotta get the state involved, right now, um, the state is dealing probably worse than the local governments are with staffing. So if they get bogged down, it takes these longer to get reviewed. And they also can implement changes that it may start off looking one way and by the time the state reviews it, it looks differently.
Alright, so, in conclude what we talked about, um, this, pretty much a lot of this stuff was continuation. And some of the stuff in the subdivision was baked into the August twenty-ninth, uh, twenty-twenty-three meeting of the Growth and Demelfit Workshop that we have here. Um, these are just options, these are not meant to slow down any kind of development, they're not that, this is not a deterrent, it's not that. Um, the proposed tools are to steer growth in a manner conforming with the values of Davie County. That's what I'm saying, and the majority of changes really need to, to stress that any changes would require a planning board approval and a public hearing and a final approval for the Board of County Commissioners. So we would address this the same way, planning board makes the recommendation, we would advertise it, we would have a public hearing and then this board will make the final decisions on any of the, the changes for the subdivision ordinance. You guys, I know we, we've addressed some specific items that have been addressed moving forward. If you have anything else, you know, that we want to address, let me know. And then in the interim between now and when we look, um, welcome to any calls, any one-on-one dis- discussions uh, to identify any options or concerns or comments that, that this board might have um, with, with the growth and development. Any kind of feedback, table of uses, anything that, like with, with any of these or subdivision ordinance or anything we said, I know we, we've got some, but anything that we really say, hey, look, we really need to address this ASAP?
I have a quick question and then, uh, what's our timetable? I mean, where are we, what are you thinking in terms of bringing this back to us? I know we'll have some input and we'll have discussions, people will call in the next little while, but uh, this doesn't need to wait till Christmas.
No, I, I'm saying is, we've got a, the agenda for the, for the next planning board meeting's already been submitted. Um, I, we can go ahead and have agenda items in the September meeting that if they feel they make a mode, we can October, the first meeting in October, we can have a lot of these stuff brought before you, submitted to you, any kind of like, like what I'm saying, I know, you said all of it's low-hanging fruit, but any specific items to address, we can have a, the, the appeal to give us the opportunity to advertise and do everything we can by October, the first meeting in October.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure uh, these ladies and gentlemen and all of us will have suggestions to you. I, I just wanna make sure, just as a individual, that we're moving on this, that we're not
Right.
we're not waiting, we don't want knee-jerk reactions, we want it to be thoughtful. But um, we also want to respond to what we're hearing from the people of Davie County and through you guys that uh, we work on this. through you guys that, uh, we work on this pretty quickly. Richard just, I mean, Richard's suggestion five minutes ago is a great idea. You know, it's just a great idea. So.
And, and Mark, if I may make a suggestion, you know, he's talking about bringing it before planning board in September and have it here in October for a vote. It's, I, I would suggest that instead of doing something along those lines is that you let the planning board, uh, make their suggestions and then we bring it before another working session here where you can have a lot of input before it ever goes, uh, to, to, to the public hearing stuff.
Yeah, I'm not saying it has to happen in thirty days.
Yeah.
Just, there just needs to be a sense of urgency.
Yeah, I, and I am, and that's what I, I, and with that sense of urgency, I don't wanna bring any kind of, like I wanna address the issues that are, that are important here and not these little nuanced things that we really need to address a smelting pot or whatever.
Well, and if you're ready with certain parts of it, in September, when we have our September work session, we can address this.
Yeah. And, and, and the, the planning board agenda, you know, we have old and new business. This is gonna be discussed based upon these things to let them know that it's gonna be coming in the n- new business, um, which the meeting is Tuesday.
Cause you only have one item on the agenda for review right now.
Correct. Yeah.
This, as we work through the process, this will require a public hearing.
Correct.
So from a logistics standpoint, you know, if we had all our items that we wanted to capture and have one public hearing to address them all, that would seem to be quite more efficient than having multiple public hearings.
Correct. Correct.
But I, I agree with the urgency issue.
Yeah, I, I agree wholeheartedly with this, but also with it being urgency, I, I don't wanna bring, like the things that I wanna bring are the things that I think we, we really need to get working on. And I think some of the things that aren't addressed in the table of uses, some of the special use permits, eh, we can, you know, we can deal with those, but I think some of the discrepancies in the table of uses where we're not addressing the ATM machines, electronic gaming establishments, some of those things, I think we can address those. I've already got a lot of the draft stuff taken care of for that, kind of written in there and some of the uh, conditions, uh, worked on those, but, but I think those are the things. In the subdivision, the same thing. Some of the things we need to look at and address. To get some feedback from the planning board, um, have some surveyors, we have some developers, we have some real estate agents, we have some people on the planning board that, that will really have a, a lot of the same concerns that this board and the community has as a whole. So I think, I think the subdivision's gonna be a little bit more nuanced and a little bit more involved, to be quite honest with you.
Johnny, one of the things I wanna make sure that we keep in mind as we're doing all this is that every line that you see up there where we want to do something and control this and control that and, and regulate this and that, it makes it that much more expensive to build here in Davie County.
Sure.
We have local builders here that have gone out of business because they just couldn't afford to keep building in Davie County and and what you end up seeing is the people that are selling their stock on the New York Stock Exchange that are coming in here and building houses and they're the only ones that can afford it. We need to make sure that we don't make it so expensive that nobody locally is able to work here in Davie County.
Right. Right.
Well, there's a fine, there's a fine line on that and also this issue of affordability that we hear out there everywhere. We, we have, that's the reason this has to be thoughtful.
Right.
Uh, because we, you know, there are both sides of that discussion going on. And we have to determine as a county, you know, wh- what do we want? Where do we want it? And, uh, so that's the reason we have to be somewhat thoughtful, but all of this is happening. And it's happening right before our eyes. And so, um, you know, November could take one track, but it also could take another track and this thing just gets life and.
Correct.
Gets, there, there's more activities.
I agree wholeheartedly. I, and, and I don't see, we keep waiting for it to kind of slow. I don't know that it is. I think it's a constant going. I think it's that engine that's just, it's going. It's not slowing down. It's not speeding up, but it's just going constant. It's that constant, uh, uh, growth. And we, we're still gonna have the local builders doing the custom homes and we're still gonna have that. Um, what we're seeing a lot more is the, you know, the big developer coming in wanting to develop that and market that.
I think we need to address the, you know, the elephant in the county, so to speak. The general public wants less development, period, no matter what it looks like. But the other thing that they definitely don't want is they don't want the plastic home type situations, no character, no nothing. So I mean, those are really like, when you start looking into it, are the two underlying things that people wanna address. And if that's with minimum lot size, if that's with conservation areas, if that's with certain requirements, that's where we need to, to get to that. Cause that kind of seems to be the overarching type themes we hear with people.
I, I, I think some of the built houses look worse than manufacturing houses that we're restricting. Because some of the manufactured mobile home companies have upped their game and some, some, if you see some new mobile homes set up, they look better than these development houses. So that's pretty bad. And, and they're more affordable.
They're, they're a lot more affordable. Correct.
But they really do. They're, they're, they're built a little better than they used to be. They're, they may be built better than some of the development houses. And they, um, they're not unattractive all the time, but yet we have a strict.
We have a very strict, when it comes to that, we are very strict when it comes to that.
But we didn't hear anybody in our input meeting say they wanted more growth. They all wanted it slowed down and cleaned up and more appealing and more, uh, suitable for our area. So.
And I think that's a, that's a great point, Commissioner Finney. We can't slow it down, but we can clean it up.
Yes.
And, and I think that's, that is what if we could take anything from this, is we're not gonna be able to slow it down nor stop it, but we can clean it up.
And I would just say, ask, you know, make sure your planning board members, um, know if they don't, I know you got some new as well, that this huge effort is coming, even those who think they're familiar, need to probably review all of your ordinances and requirements and things and be ready for a healthy discussion.
Right.
Anything else for Mr. Easter? Thank you. We look forward to hearing. Now, I, I'm gonna tell you this, we, uh, we've already gone about an hour, uh, about forty-five minutes over what our normal meeting does. This is a work session. So we are going to break for two minutes per some request I have here. And then we will be, uh, uh, I don't guess we have to have any kind of motion, do we? Uh, we're, we're just gonna take a two-minute break, uh, as long as there's not lines in certain areas of, of this hot, of this floor. And we'll be right back. Okay?
More of a bar than it is a restaurant.
So I didn't really know we would last this long.
Yeah, the places are usually full.
I'll just, if we're still going, I'll just get, get up and leave.
Last will be more. We seek out where the locals go.
Yes. All right. We will, uh, we will call ourselves back in session and Ms. Stacy.
Good morning.
Before Stacy jumps, yeah, before Stacy jumps to her presentation, uh, I just wanted to let you all know that back during the budget, we had talked about looking at some additional employee type changes. They were not necessarily budgetary in a sense. Um, the big budgetary one, obviously, to our step system. We also looked at, um, continuous service. I know that had been an issue that we wanted to address for employees that may have had a gap in service, but had been with the county, um, maybe on a second or a third stint and we wanted to include that time. And we, when we look at their overall time at the county and we've made that change in our personnel policy. And then one of the things that came up during budget was a discussion, um, of, of how we look at our FMLA, our Family Medical Leave Act time in relation to, um, our health insurance coverage for employees. So, um, we looked, we started digging into this and, and we came into several questions. And we're gonna lead up some background and get to those questions. And then we just wanted to receive some feedback on you all and which direction you wanted to see us move as we address some of those issues. So I'm gonna turn it over to Stacy, our HR director, to lead us through this first discussion.
Okay. Just to give you some background, I'm sure y'all know what family medical leave is, but just in case you don't. It was enacted back in nineteen ninety-three. It's a federal law. And it allows eligible employees up to twelve weeks of job protected leave for qualified medical and family reasons. An eligible employee has to work for the county for at least twelve months. And they have to work at least twelve hundred fifty hours during the twelve months prior to the leave. And qualified reasons would include birth or placement of a child, including adoption or foster care, care for child, spouse or parent with a serious health condition, your own serious health condition could be physical or mental, and certain military reasons related to service members deployment. The next question that Brian had asked me was in reference to if the employee must take the twelve weeks consecutively. And the answer to that is no. They don't have to, but they can take it all at once. Most times you see all at once when someone's had a child, they like to take twelve weeks off to spend time with their child. If someone's had surgery, they might need to take all twelve weeks off. They might only need to take six weeks off and need other two or three weeks of intermittent type time. They can also use intermittent time by reducing the time they work each day, each day, such as if they need to go to the doctor. They might need to go or potentially for physical therapy treatments, whatever that might be. They could work part of the day, then the next part of the day they're, they're off. So that would be part of the intermittent portion. The approval process is made through an outside source. It's a third-party FMLA source. We've been utilizing them since October of two thousand fifteen. And the approved FMLA time may be paid or unpaid. It depends upon what the leave balances are that the employees have. So I know the big question is, do the benefits continue when an employee is on FMLA, FMLA? And the answer is yes. We are required to have their benefits continued just as they were as when they were working with us. So that means that any deductions they had, they would continue as they are as long as they have the pay. If they don't have the pay, they would have to talk to someone in payroll to get the deductions paid for. So they would handle that through, uh, through Brit- Brittany would do that. That ceases once, uh, to do this way, under our current policy, that ceases once the employee, then once their FMLA ends. So what I mean by that is, I'm kind of jumbling my words. Once their FMLA ends, their health insurance would end at the end of that month. So if someone's been out for their twelve weeks, they're coming back, or their FMLA ends at the end of August, their insurances would end the end of August. So they could continue their insurance through Cobra starting September one, and they would pay for that through, uh, again, another th- third party who handles that portion for us. So Brian asked me to check and see what some other counties did. And we checked with a, a bunch of counties, did not hear back from two of them, but we heard from the ones that are listed up here. The majority of them allow leave time beyond what FMLA allows for. They would leave it as for as long as a person would have sick or vacation time available to them. Some of them ended after four weeks, some of them ended after, I think there might be one that offers it up to additional six weeks. So you can kind of go about it any way you, you want to after it's, after the FMLA portion. Do you want me to leave this up here?
So, so these counties that say they allow leave time and health insurance indefinitely are not requiring their employees to go on Cobra?
Correct.
So for those of you who don't know, if you have to go on Cobra, it's like eight seventy-two or nine, eight seventy-two a month. So if you have an employee that's already out of work and struggling financially because of their sickness and possibly losing pay because they're not able to work overtime or extra jobs that they may have to work in order to live because of their current pay, then they, then we add the extra struggle on them of them having to pay eight hundred and seventy-two dollars a month to keep their healthcare, which because they're out sick, they have to have.
Is that even if they have leave time?
Yes.
Even if they have leave time?
Yes.
You, after the FMLA, they, they're forced to go on Cobra?
Yep, yes, sir.
Even if they have insurance and vacation and are drawing a check, they're still having to pay that eight seventy-two and it is a huge burden on someone who's already struggling.
So when our del person in Surrey say they allow it indefinitely, but they're talking about they allow it as long as they have leave time?
Correct.
Okay, which seems to be, which, which seems to be reasonable.
That's what we wanted to see what other counties were doing because currently, yes, our policy states, um, and I would imagine if we polled all hundred counties, we're not the only one in the same boat. But at the end of your twelve weeks of FMLA time, regardless of the amount of leave time you may have, whether that's sick leave or personal leave, uh, in order to continue healthcare coverage, the option goes to Cobra. Um, so now that, if we go to the next slide, I think, I think that was really part of our conversations that came up during budget. And as we looked into this particular topic, um, and, and hearing what you all were saying, we had some questions that we just wanted to put out there and address if this is something that we wanna move forward with. Seeing that other counties do it, obviously it can be done. Um, if you have an employee, and, and keep in mind when employees go on FMLA, they are being paid if they have that leave balance on the books with that employee during that twelve weeks. Um, so with these other counties, I'm assuming that as long as they have that time, they do it indefinitely. And we just wanted to talk to you about, is there anything in particular that you wanna see us address beyond just saying indefinitely? Uh, or, and, or, I mean, I don't wanna say indefinitely that so it sounds like it's forever, as long as the employee still has a leave balance. So um, we do have some employees that have, if, if you've been in local government for a long time and you've been relatively healthy, we do have employees that have, um, I, I would dare say years of leave time. Um, typically during FMLA, we hold that position open and we do not replace that person. Usually that's just for the twelve week period. But, um, is that a practice we wanna continue if the person's that has leave balance and then they need additional time? Especially if it's looking like it's gonna be a lengthy amount of time off. Um, do we wanna continue the practice of not replacing that individual in that department? Um, just so you're aware, during any, uh, during FMLA for sure, but also Stacy helped me out. If, if it extends beyond the twelve weeks, are they still accruing their normal accruals?
If they are in a paid status, yes.
Okay. So if we are paying them via their leave time, they're also accruing. So that, that balance keeps growing even though they're using it.
The, does the twelve, the, this, the FMLA period eat into their, into their, um, their balance of leave time? Okay. Perfect. So, uh, to me, and I, I'll let everyone, to me, there is some reasonableness to what Surrey and those counties are doing in terms. I do not think, because as frugal as our county is and as a great job as you guys have done running staffing at, you know, we don't pad, we don't pad staffing in this county. So we don't have, uh, we don't have the luxury of, of, I think, um, keeping a s- a, a, a spot open necessarily indefinitely. I think there needs to be some thoughtfulness to that. But the issue of just cutting them off when they have leave balance and making them go on Cobra, I don't think that's reasonable either. So I think there's a middle ground. This is just my personal opinion. I certainly willing to listen to what everybody has to say. But I think, um, I think that's kind of where the middle ground is. Let's don't cut them off immediately, but we can't let someone go. We can't leave a, a position open for a couple of years. We just don't have that buffer, I don't think. Uh, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah. And I think that's what we kind of wanted to hear from you all, so that you were aware, because we do have people with significant amounts of time of leave. Um, just so you're aware, also while they're on leave, if they are on our health insurance and while they're on leave, they accrue or they have additional health issues. Again, that goes on the county's health insurance. And then with all our employees, when they go on leave, we hope they return. And, and there's always the possibility that somebody could potentially have a long leave balance. And we go through this process with them and they don't return. Um, obviously we can't hold anybody to a position, but I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that particular option uh, with some of these folks, because some folks, you know, either they look for other opportunities while they're on leave, or it may be that their leave puts them in a place where they cannot come back to work.
Do you have any statistics that tell you how many actually go out and do not come back or, or do come back?
No, we don't, we don't necessarily track it that way because, um, I don't, I don't wanna necessarily say the FMLA is why somebody left. Could be other reasons as well. But, you know, obviously to go through this, um, you know, obviously to go through this, to hold a position open and accrue some additional costs and then they ultimately leave, I mean, that hurts us, but, I mean, that could happen with any employee anytime.
It's usually not typical, when people go out on FMLA, again, I'll use, you know, the birth of a child as an example, typically those people are coming back, it's, it's usually not, usually not, not coming back, put it that way. It's, it's pretty rare that somebody goes out on FMLA and then leaves.
Well, can, can I ask you this, though? Does the law allow us to differentiate? In other words, someone that goes out on FMLA for the birth of a child is someone that's different than they have an injury, and they're, they're out for a health-related reason that like might extend them beyond the FMLA, if that makes sense to you, in terms of the way we address that. Obviously, if somebody's out for the birth of a child and they don't come back at the end of the, of the FMLA period, I think we would have to address that from a personnel standpoint. I see that differently than I see someone that's disabled to some extent, short-term or long-term, if that makes sense.
That's exactly what I was asking, trying to ask about.
I agree, I would defer to Ed to see if he has any input on what the law will.
Your FMLA law says that for any of those reasons that Stacy had gone over earlier, we've got to hold that position open, and we've got to allow them out during that time period, and we've got to provide the benefits during that time period, you know? And we can't do, in any way, differentiate between one or another, whether it be because of birth of a child or because of an injury, you know?
But that is for only 12 weeks.
That's for the 12 weeks.
Yeah, that's for, that's for the three months, that's for basically three months. After that, FMLA, FMLA law, you throw that out the window, and then it's whatever the county has as far as our policies.
So, so, but I guess my question was, does the law allow us to differentiate? So we can set our policy however we want.
After the 12 weeks.
After the 12 weeks, okay, thank you.
I just think if somebody has, still has time, vacation time and sick time, that they're able to continue to use and draw a check and they're still accruing, so if all of that is staying the same, why can, is their insurance not staying the same? Because that Cobra payment, I mean, that mentally affects your healing process if you're out for a major medical issue as well, and I, I just, I think if that can be, as long as they have time, they should, if everything else is the same, why isn't their insurance the same? Why are we making them do Cobra and spend that additional money? Because that's thousands of dollars if you're, if you have a major medical.
I agree with Commissioner Finney, I, I think you're talking about, you're kind of getting into a point of talking about a property right with your vacation and all that, but, but to Commissioner Jones' point, we need, we need to like, we don't want to, I think what we need to establish today is we don't want it cut off right at 12 weeks, but we do need to review things and maybe by case by ca, or at least say, well, we're going to do it to this amount, but then it's going to have to be reviewed, because you don't, it is kind of, if somebody had like a year and a half sick time, you know, are we going to keep paying them for a year and a half, are we going to keep them on it? Where do we, where do we draw the proverbial line and what's, is fair and reasonable? Not what's fair and reasonable by hiding behind the law, what's fair and reasonable in layman's law, so to speak, is what we need to search for in this.
Right, we, we do have individuals who have literally years' worth of sick time. That doesn't include their vacation time, that's just their sick time.
Yeah, and I, and I think, I think to Commissioner Shos' point, what we need to be aware of is if somebody has a year and a half of sick time and it's, you know, from a county standpoint, you're still paying that individual county dollars to not work. I mean, obviously, we want to be reasonable in allowing someone time to recover and come back if they are having an injury or they've had an illness, or they're taking care of somebody. But, you know, ultimately, we have to be aware of the fact that that work is not being performed and that you're still accruing that cost. And I hate, I hate to bring it to just a cost situation, but I think there is a nuance to this, and I guess we didn't want to necessarily come to you with a blanket statement, because I think what we've seen in FMLA is that situations are so different.
But they, another, on the flip side of that, if they have that time, they've earned that time. So what, how do you, I mean?
Well, I don't think the issue is anybody is, is questioning FMLA. We're questioning what happens at the end of FMLA. So the bottom line is, we need to strike a reasonable balance in terms of how long we're going to continue on with the health insurance, because indefinitely is just not, I mean, that, that's, it's, that's wonderful if you have buffer and you have positions and you have people that can take on these roles, but I don't think we have that situation. But I think that's where the balance comes from, is where do we go past that FMLA date in terms of paying the health insurance, the benefits, the salary, that kind of thing? Leave is leave, they've accrued it, we just can't necessarily hold a position for two or three years, we just don't have that luxury. Richard, I believe you were going to say something, or?
You've pretty well covered it right there, what I was going to say.
And, and I think what staff, from what I've heard staff talk about it, you know, I think what staff is looking for is some sort of guidance from you guys from the standpoint and gals, and out from the standpoint if, is if you've got someone who's got two or three years' worth of, of sick time built up, you know, and that individual is now permanently disabled, and you know, is never going to be able to come back, do you allow that to go on during that time period and go ahead and pay the, the insurance during that time period versus someone who has got three years' worth of sick time built up? And there's a likelihood or a good possibility that person's going to be able to come back and wants to come back, then do you treat them differently?
Well, I think we just, you know.
Those are things, I think, that they're looking for guidance from you.
In terms of my position is, we need to find a reasonable balance.
What does that mean?
We cannot go out three years, we just, and, and I'm willing to listen to staff recommendations. If you guys want to have a commissioner, like subcommittee that you would talk to about it, I think that, I think that's great. I don't think we can hold a position for three years. It's just not, that's not, we can't, we're not, we can't tolerate that because we don't have the luxury to tolerate that.
We're lean.
Yeah, yeah, I think we are.
I think you've got two things in play here. I think first, I want to say this before I forget it, I think that we, whether we hold a position or not, when we've got smaller departments, especially small departments, I'm not saying large, it's not a problem either because of the role, we need to think of some way, regardless of what policy we come up, that they get help, relief, temporary help, which is a totally different issue than talking about how long we're going to keep paying somebody, because position held open or not, if you're, if you have, without an employee for six, eight, nine months, you need to fill that position, even if it's temporary, or you need to decide what works best for each department, because sometimes a temporary is, can be as dangerous in a position as not having somebody, so I think that needs to be looked at. But my suggestion just conceptually would be to start with something like saying, we're going to extend it to six months, and upon, which would be basically, essentially doubling the 12-week period, and then it be something that would be reviewed at that point, because it's a difference between somebody coming and holding a position forever and ever and ever, and somebody maybe that's being treated with cancer or something, that maybe is incapacitated for a while and really hopes to come back, so, you know, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there as a possible suggestion.
And Brent can talk to that from the standpoint of when he was Register of Deeds, and I'd say small department, and if all of a sudden you had two people out for six months, it would put you, that department into a crimp, a major crimp, especially if it was during a time period where there was a lot of deeds coming in.
Well, and we want to be, we want to be flexible, but you, you know, we have to address employees consistently. You can't, you can't have a policy for one department and a policy for another department. Certainly, we want to be as flexible as we possibly can, but we have to have some blanket position that we, that we hold, because whatever that timeframe is, if we allow one department to review and allow this employee to do this, and we have a department head over here that says, no, we're, we're stopping now, that's, that's creating a, an inconsistent environment, and that's one thing we don't want necessarily either.
I want to make sure, that's not, I want to make sure that's not what I was suggesting. What I was suggesting first and foremost is that according to your staffing needs, you don't, you may need help within that period of time, even if it's two weeks into it. It's hard enough to run the office I ran and have somebody out on maternity leave, much less somebody that's suffering from a life-threatening illness for nine months, 12 months. So I'm just saying, that needs to be looked at and not hold over the head of the department that, well, as long as they're out, you can't have anybody. Well, I think we can find the resources to have somebody, even if it's a temporary, that's what I'm suggesting there. What I'm suggesting on the other is to start out with saying, let's maybe expand the policy to six months, and then after that, it's reviewed to look at, because it's like saying, if somebody's never going to come back, you just can't, it's not, it's not unreasonable to terminate somebody at some point, but I visualize this being the person that's, has a transplant, the person, I had that situation in my office, and unfortunately, that passed away in 2004 when Carol worked in my office, you know, we knew that she most likely, if everything worked well, was going to be out six or eight months. So I kind of needed help on my end, but she needed help on her end. These are the examples I'm thinking of.
So as, as a former department head, you're saying, let's add an additional 12 weeks? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, or make it, or make it 12, make it 24 or 20, if 26, because that's exactly six months, that's kind of what I'm thinking. I'm okay with either one, but I'm thinking, why don't we just make it chronologically six months to start with?
Yeah, I'm looking at Davidson and Forsyth, you know, they're adding an additional 18 weeks, an additional, so basically over the FMLA, you're talking about an additional three more months or 12 more weeks.
Yeah, or make it, make it six months exactly.
Six months total.
Within a day or two, you know? And then it would be reviewed after that, and hopefully that'll take care of a lot of it, and then you'll know that if somebody's out, it could be reviewed. But I just don't think we're going to have that many cases where this is an issue, because most people, a lot of people want to work, and if you've got a disability situation, then they need to be seeking to get put on, you know, disability, I know sometimes that can, but, you know, but a disability versus having a transplant or having cancer or having something else that we visualize, or, you know, is, to me, is two different things, than saying, you're never going to work again unless just something miraculous happens.
You are correct, these are the out-of-the-norm type of situations, for sure.
And I really would like for us to address that Cobra, because if they have time, they ought to be able to go back on our insurance. That, that is an excruciating payment for somebody, and, and that mentally affects their healing process. If it's somebody that's trying to heal and they've got that bill, especially somebody that works shift work, like communications or the sheriff's office or Joseph's Department, they depend on their second jobs for their income. Well, when they're sick, that second income's gone, and now we're taking half their paycheck for Cobra instead of leaving them on our insurance, and that's a lot, that's a strain.
So I'm going to assume, Brent, that's what you're talking about.
I'm, I'm assuming that we expand that insurance coverage to a full six-month period and then review that case at six months. I would say then start reviewing that case and looking at it in a, you know, in kind of like a quarter of the year type increment going forward, if you needed to go further or if you were willing to go further. That's what I'm saying, it needs to be reviewed after six months.
And that's, that's an extension beyond the 12 weeks of FMLA, assuming the employee still has leave balance.
Mm-hmm, 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 mm-hmm. The other thing, um, could, what do you all do when you have the limited FMLA? How many, the, where's, intermittent FMLA?
Nothing changes.
How do you determine if someone actually qualifies for that?
I don't, FMLA source does.
Okay.
Stacy, isn't that correct? That's pretty much, that's a protection too by.
Yes.
FMLA law, so, I mean, if somebody's telling you in good faith, they can work two days each week, they're work two days each week and it accrues, and we're not really supposed to delve into.
Yes, sir, that is correct, because it's, it's 12 weeks, whether it's intermittent or consecutive.
In my training of department heads with, Stacy does some things, and, and she wants me to do certain things within that, and I use an example of where someone has been out on FMLA disability, and, and then the doctor writes them back and says, they can come back to work, but they can only work seven hours a day. Well, you really need them for eight hours a day, but they can only work seven hours a day, you know? And under that particular hypothetical that I, I throw out to those department heads and then asked them, you know, can you get rid of them or what's the situation there? And, uh, the way I've got it worded is that they're not using up their 12 weeks of FMLA in a 12, 12-month time period, so therefore, they could go on indefinitely for the next 20 years, and all, because only seven hours a day, or only four out of five days of the week, that sort of thing. So, yeah, and, and the law protects them from that standpoint to use that.
So from our implementation standpoint, where, where are we here? You're going to come back to us with recommendations and we're going to act on this sooner rather than later, I would hope?
That would be the game plan.
Okay.
I don't, I mean, obviously, I'm always going to leave the floor open, if you want to do it as a more formal work session like this, or if you just want us to send you the recommendations, and then you can give us feedback with the tweak, and then when it's ready, we bring you back the full, ready-to-go version. We can go either route.
And I'm, I'm assuming you want, you want to, or does the board want him to crush, crunch those numbers, so that you've got some, some number costs too to look at?
Well, I mean, I'm okay with that, but I mean, I think you, I think we've all given you kind of an idea of what our thoughts are here. We, we want the Cobra rescinded in terms of the way we've been approaching that. Brent has brought up a good idea to go six months, be, you know, whatever that is beyond the, the 12 weeks, and then there may be other issues that are, that are kind of inherent in here that we're not thinking about. So certainly, you could send those to us and, if, if it's proper for us to review, and then we, if we need to vote on them, we can address them September, October, whenever you guys.
I think the only additional, sorry, the only additional thing is that working with departments to hire temporary or whatever, and that kind of thing.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we should be, you know, scared to do that, you can't, you just can't leave departments. It's not fair to the rest of your staff, so I mean, I think that's a, I don't see why we have to wait on that. I mean, I think if we've got a situation where we need help, we need to hire it, you know, temporarily.
I just don't think it's enough to bankrupt us, the number of situations we have anyway, but I think we need to, we owe it to the citizens, to everybody else, to have an office adequately staffed, because one major lawsuit would be a lot more than, I know we got insurance coverage, but be a lot worse than spending $100,000 for an exceptional case.
Yep. You good?
I have another question about intermittent FMLA. So when you go out on FMLA, the rules are, you are cut off, like your emails cut off, you're not supposed to have communication with anybody but human resources, so how, what is that, how does that work with intermittent? If they're coming in and working when?
They're not cut off, we can't, we can't cut them off.
So you're not cut off at all for intermittent, but you are for?
No, because you can have somebody who comes in and works for three hours, goes to the doctor for another three hours, but then goes home because they have a laptop and they go home and they work.
Mm-hmm.
So it would be impossible for tech solutions to cut them off at this point, and, and we would have to know so much about what's going on with them, that would be. And, and we would have to know so much about what's going on with them, that would be impossible to do. So, no, they're not cut off.
So, the people that are cut off are the ones that are truly sitting, when I say sit, they're out of work completely for that window of time.
They've been told by their doctor, they have a doctor's note that says that they cannot work. The doctor sees their job description, they says, nope, you can't do this because of X, Y, and Z. They're cut off completely. Or the baby's been born, they're cut off completely because they're going to be continuously out with that child. Or their mother is sick and they're out helping with that, you know, that particular situation.
And they really, I mean, for the sake of the organization or their FMLA, they need to be cut off. Because they would be, aren't they potentially violating something if their work appearing to do work or have communications or am I?
If they're on continuous FMLA, they need to be cut off, yes.
Right.
Because they, they would be working if they're looking at emails or catching up on phone calls or whatever, yes.
And we don't want a situation where a person that's construed that they were doing work when all they were trying to do was chit chat with somebody, you know, because they had a need, you know what I mean?
Right.
But then it's so weird because apparently, um, when they're on FMLA, they can apply for another job within their organization, even though they're supposed to be cut off. So, much of it doesn't make sense.
They have to be able to go in and do their timesheet. And that is all part of the timesheet process is the application process, so they can see positions that are open at that point.
And on leave, I mean, you, you, we don't, when, when individual goes on leave in that particular situation, I mean, we don't have any direct say whether any employee applies for any job. Whether that's with the county or with any other organization. Um, FMLA only stops you from doing the job at hand in that moment. And with intermittent FMLA, I mean, you could be taking care of a sick family member and it may be that every Wednesday, you need to be the person in charge of them for twelve weeks. So, we're not gonna cut you off Monday through Tuesday and Thursday through Friday. Um, we have to hope that during that Wednesday, when you're taking care of that family member, that, that's what you're doing. I mean, you shouldn't really be doing work, that's why you're on FMLA.
So, what if you're on FMLA and just a supervisor position in your same line of work, but just to step up on your scale? Becomes available when you're out on FMLA? Are you eligible to apply?
Yeah, be, if, anybody's eligible to apply for any position that they feel that they're qualified for. FMLA status doesn't stop anybody from applying for a job, um, anywhere.
The, the application for the, that you're, where you're applying for a job, whether it be in the county or out of the county, is not part of your work.
But if you're completely cut off from communication and it's an internal posting, how are you supposed to know about it?
Again, that's part of the, the timesheet process, the employee self-service. They can see, they, employees, I can see anything that's internal, external, that's a job available through the, through the timesheet process.
And, and applying, and applying for a job is not work.
On the employee self-service website, they can, the employees can see all the available positions that are open. They log in and do their time and if they are wondering what positions are open, I think it's employment opportunities, I think it's what it's called. They click on that and look and they can see what's available. And then they can go ahead and apply.
Then in the past, not recently, but a few years ago, some employees were told they could not, um, put in for an advancement within their department because they were on FMLA. It's been a while back, but they were.
They were told incorrectly because a, applying for a job is not work. I mean, we don't, we don't have any of our employees who in their work description says that part of their job is to apply for jobs. So, they can apply whether they're FMLA, they can interview. Um, you'd have to treat them just like any other applicant. It may be that their condition hinders their ability to come in and do an interview, but technically speaking, and at the end of that twelve weeks or whenever. And people don't have to take twelve weeks.
Mm-hmm.
You go out on surgery and, and the doctor clears you quicker, you can come back to work. You don't have to take the whole twelve. But really, there, there's nothing to stop anybody from applying. I mean, even if they're not qualified, they can still apply, we, we get that all the time.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Stacy? All right, Stacy, anything else for us?
No, sir.
Thank you so much, we appreciate you. And then next, uh, and I will say this, Brad, we've got a, uh, at least one commissioner that's on a hard stop at eleven thirty. So, if somebody gets up and walks out on you, don't, don't take offense to it.
Not personal.
We've got to make a decision on what we want these meetings to look like.
Well, I'm here just on a continuation from our last stated board meeting. Uh, we wanted further discussion, opportunity to talk about the cleaning contract. Uh, you kind of alluded that Brent would kind of be that point person. Uh, Brent and I've had conversation, I'm gonna let him kind of present what we've discussed and I'm here for any other discussion or question.
Hopefully, I don't mischaracterize it any. I think just to clear up some things that the discussion that we were having, you know, that the meeting about possibly conceptually looking at, um. At some point going in-house, whatever, you know, had lots of moving parts, obviously. And, um, while that may have merit, um, that just due to the nature of the expediency, the time, the logistics, et cetera. It seemed to be, you know, in our best interest to honor the contract that we had before us. Because I don't think, one thing was pretty clear is I think I was looking at it from a concept of a hard reset. Not a concept that was disparaging in any way to our bidder and their being responsible bidder and all those kind of things. I think they met all the criteria. So, timing maybe a little bit off, maybe didn't planning or have enough information, it doesn't really matter. It's neither here nor there, it's just, uh, something that maybe we need to look at in the future. But that's kind of my, and my pretty much saying kind of how we talked through it.
Yeah, you're correct, uh, you know, if, you know, moving forward, uh, no matter which way the decision's made, I think at the next board meeting, that's when that has to be approved. You know, if, if you approve the current bids, current contract, you know, if you're willing or wanting to look at that in the future. At the end of that contract extension, you know, that's something that can be a working process of, here's what we could do in the future. You're correct.
And I would say too that, you know, with whatever appearance that may have been, as we discussed this at the last meeting was. We were kind of vetting things that, how long would the, you know, would the current people be willing to, uh, do it for six months? For a year, for a year and a half, whatever the case might be. And we had lots of questions answered, so as the meeting evolved, it was kind of, became more and more obvious that probably there wasn't really a great. Middle of the road solution with, because we're just gonna have to probably, I think it, we're probably gonna have to scrap the process and rebid it or we, you know, and. Who's gonna want to rebid it for fifteen months or eighteen months or whatever the case might be, so we can get our ducks in a row. So, you know, I, I, I think at least my recommendation at this point is Brad and I talked through it is that, you know, we approve the contract as presented at the next meeting. Now, it's not a form of emotion, that's just suggestion based on research.
So, was that company willing to do a, to extend their services at all? Did you, were you able to ask them about that?
Yeah, so during our last board meeting, you know, going past September, you know, that's really getting into legal issues, the way it was bid and extending that contract. Uh, did reach out to them, I do have a dollar amount to get us through the end of September. Uh, that would be the final one that I have and willing to go any further past that would, uh, contradict the bids that are on the table.
So, they were not willing to go past that, other, outside of that contract?
I did not propose that question.
Okay.
For legal purposes.
I, I think, having thought about it and talking to some folks since our last meeting, I, I don't think we got a choice but to go forward. We have a responsible bid and I think, uh, we need to take it up at the September meeting, so.
Yeah, I, it, um, I think that's reasonable, Brent discussed it with Brad, but I, I do really. Uh, we do not want to get in this situation again, uh, three years from now. We, uh, I, I think we all have a consensus that we want to begin the discussion about how we bring this thing in-house. Um, it, it's clear from Brent's, uh, research that there are counties of our size that do this. And so, uh, you know, we talked about having a requirement with this bidder that all their employees would be from Davie County. We were told we couldn't do that, so, uh, because we'd already bid it out. Uh, we certainly could do it, but we'd already bid it out with certain parameters. So, within the next little while, as we roll, we're gonna, you know, I think we're all in you, in, in unity in that we need to, we need to talk about this. We need to discuss it, we need to look at options. We don't need to wait till ninety days prior to the contract coming up again to have these discussions. So, though we may be quiet about it from, from this point on, um, we, I think we expect some discussion to be had on, you know. What would it look like to bring it in-house? Uh, we can't control what people bid, that's not the process. So, uh, but we do want some level of control about the money staying in Davie County. And the money going to Davie County citizens, not, uh, outside of Davie County to, you know, wherever it might be. So, um, though, again, we may be quiet about it here, um, Brian and others, Brad, whoever. I, I think, you know, we need to, we need to begin discussions about how we're gonna handle this thing when this contract comes up for renewal again, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I totally agree with that.
Thank you.
Continuation of these type of work sessions will be, and doing that. So, you know, when we get to that midpoint of, uh, approved contract, uh, it'd be great to sit down with the board, the manager, myself to say, what's our goal? Like say, are you wanting to stay local or are you wanting to do a hybrid? Are you wanting to save money? We need to know what our outcome wants to be so we can get there.
And maybe department heads can offer you some feedback, like what they need from their individual departments or what they may be willing to do. Frankly, I don't know that we need to pay somebody additional to empty trash. I empty my own trash can at my workplace, it's my trash. I, I think we should expect people to empty their trash can if they have a community trash can to put it into. But some departments may say, you know, I really don't need this that they're coming in here and doing, or I don't need it as often. I, I think that, I think we can do it ourselves for at least the same, if not less. But we will have our own employees that we're able to offer a job and benefits and that we can hold accountable and that we can directly go to and say. You know, we'd really like for you to do this differently or whatever, I, I think it would be more efficient. And, um, just overall better in the long run, so, but you, you can do it a piece at a time instead of having to do it in a rush.
That's the, that's the other side of that coin is expectations of what each department's expecting, which they were sent out that information in November, late fall of last year. To say, hey, we're getting ready to bid the contract out, what are your expectations for your department and what would you like to see? So, we, we, we collected that information, uh, there's a lot of expectations. So, it'll be a change of culture if you're, if you're wanting to see employees do a little bit more of their own housekeeping, but it can be done.
Well, and their expectations might be a little different if they think it's gonna be their own people instead of a, I mean, they, their expectations may change a little bit. With this different approach, maybe, maybe not, so.
With what, with what y'all are saying, uh, is that you're wanting Brad then to maybe twelve months or eighteen months? Out before a contract expired to get started on, on doing those things, you know? And of course then, then you've also comments made about wanting to, to make certain that all the, the, the money stayed in Davie County, Davie County residents. And all, but you've got to realize that, that unless we got affordable housing, which is another issue y'all have to tackle. We may be hiring people from outside of the county still as county employees.
That's, that's, that's not the issue here, they're, they're our employees. Brad, I, I don't care if you start on it tomorrow.
Yes.
Begin thinking about it, begin bringing back to us options, um, within, I would say twelve months or even six months of, of the contract renewal. Um, that's, that's all we're, that's all we're asking.
I would extend that to, you know, the same thing about mowing and stuff, just make it real clear that when we talk about wanting to take care of our employees by not adding headcount. We're talking about not adding headcount to existing staffs with the lack of population growth, et cetera, then we're pretty good shape. We're not talking about conceptually looking at maybe a reset, which are two different things here if we're talking about creating a department. But I think it's a hard reset and see, because nobody's been knocking down my doors, I sit at the meeting saying, this is a bad cleaning company. This is, they're bad, they're this, they're that. It's more about like some other counties, let's, can we look at what reshaping how we do it? You know, do, does every office need to be vacuumed daily, does everything? I take my, you know, the trash, like what Benita's saying, it's, it was, but it takes a while to do it. And when we found out that we couldn't, you know, we couldn't really extend it without causing lots of difficulties, then it was, we needed to move on and approve it, so.
And sometimes something may need to be done on an unexpected, I mean, somebody may come in and throw a plant across the floor in an office or something. And need something that's not on the schedule, an extra, somebody to show up and vacuum up a extra mess, I mean. But I just, you got time, that'll give you time to investigate it, because I know you have so much free time.
All right, anything else for Brad? Thanks, Brad, appreciate you.
Lastly, I think I'm gonna do this every meeting, I'm just gonna always leave the floor open instead of commissioner comments. Is there anything in particular that you want us to consider, whether it be the immediate next meeting or just a future meeting?
The, uh, this is just my thought as we're, as we're here, we've got our department, a lot of our department heads here. Uh, is we need to really maybe consider on focusing these meetings, uh, determine, do we want these meetings to last three hours, half a day? Uh, I think we put on our time schedule about an hour and a half on this. The nature of this though, because it's give and take, I'm not sure we can address like six or eight subjects. Uh, so, and I know this was the first one, but, uh, it, it was great, we really appreciate it. But I think we need to kind of determine how we want this to look. Uh, and that will kind of lead us backwards to what we're gonna do. Cause I could see if in September, we deal with Mr. Easter's issues, it probably, if we deal with HR issues at some point, those could take a whole meeting. So, uh, I, that's all I ask for is, hey, let's, uh, let's kind of define what we're gonna do so that we're not keeping our department heads half a day in here. They've got a lot of productive things to do and I'm not saying this is not productive, but I know you got things you'd like to be doing other than sitting here looking at us. So, uh, uh, just kind of moving forward.
And if they do have something urgent to do, they don't, I don't, I don't want people to feel like they have to sit here. If we're just talking about zoning and you need to be in your office doing something, then you need to be there.
Anything else, guys, ladies? All right. Okay, uh, speaking now or forever, hold your peace. Thank, thank you guys for coming, hope we have been productive and, uh, we'll do this again in September. Uh, thank you so much, we stand adjourned.